We have a full agenda, so welcome everyone to the Carlisle Select Board meeting on January 11th, 2022, our first Select Board meeting of the new year. And I want to quickly review the agenda. We'll start with our general community input. This is not the time, if you want to make comments about pickleball facility, that'll come shortly. But this is for other comments from anyone that's joined the call. Then Chief Fisher is here to give the LEPC update. Then we'll have a little over an hour for the continued public comments about the pickleball facility. And then Chief Fisher will return. We'll have some discussion about police staffing. At 8:45, the Council on Aging is going to tell us about a proposal around the Senior Tax Deferral Program. And then at 9:00, we have a presentation from the Transfer Station Task Force. 9:30, I'm sorry, yeah, 9:30, the Town Administrator is going to talk with us about the COLA recommendation for non-union town employees. At 9:45, we'll have the Town Administrator's report, liaison reports after that. And then approval of some warrant articles. We don't have minutes to approve tonight with the hope of adjourning at 10:05. And along the way, we do have some various staff or guests joining us for different parts of the agenda. And when that is happening, I'll introduce those folks as well. So I'd like to invite Chief Fisher to please give us the LEPC update. Thanks.
Thanks very much for having me. So the LEPC met yesterday. Of course, the majority of the discussion was around the surge in cases we've had here in Carlisle and frankly, the surge in cases regionally and nationwide. Specifically, some of the things that statistics that folks might find useful. There were 99 positive cases Carlisle in December. And there were 128 positive cases alone the first week of January, so January 1 to 8. Linda Fantasia did report that while the symptoms were generally not terrible, they were positive just the same and folks were ill. The folks at FIRE, of course, have done tremendous work doing testing here in Carlisle. We're very fortunate here in Carlisle to have the drive-through tests without significant weight. Chief Soros did report the positivity rate in the tests that he gave. The last few weeks went from 15% up to 25% and now is on its way back down again. But probably many of you know that there were some lines, but not nearly what folks in other towns have seen for lines for testing. So once again, the LEPC did a heartfelt thanks to members of our FIRE department that are doing fantastic work. COA reported on a variety of programs they're working on. Good stuff and also spoke about some food resources that were available at this time, still pretty plentiful. And about a significant donation, they got to their food program. I think each, each group, so schools, town hall, a library, did report that they were adversely affected by folks that either were ill with COVID or needed to be out to quarantine for one reason or the other. But town hall still been going, going well. Schools talked about a pool testing. They did end up with eight positive tests in the last two weeks, 10 pods were tested. And we had a few people out at the police department, both civilian and police officers out that were ill. So it's been a busy time, unfortunately, with folks being ill. But and also some, some very positive, some very important things around testing. One thing that both the FIRE department and Board of Health are looking at is purchasing some testing, some more testing materials. And hopefully they're going to, we'll have something more out about that soon. The at-home tests. That's all I have to report on. Chair, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any members of the Select Board have a question? I was remiss, thank you, Chief Fisher, sorry, I was remiss in jumping right over the general community input part of the agenda because I guess I'm so focused on the next part with the pickleball discussion. So anyway, does anybody who is on the call wish to make a comment to the Select Board as a whole, you know, as a rule of thumb, we hear the, you, we hear the comment, but we don't typically engage in discussions or question and answers, but we can get, always get back to you about something. So if you'd like to make a comment now, a general community input comment, what you can do is either just raise your hand if you're, if you have your live face on the, on the frame, or you can use the chat, I mean, sorry, the reactions button to officially raise your hand. So maybe Kate and Tim, if you'll help me out and see is if anyone is indicating they'd like to make a comment now?
Not at this time.
Okay, great, thank you. And so I'd like to also, since we're all, all the Select Board members are here, just very quickly, obviously, I'm Barney Arnold, the Chair of the Select Board, and also with us is Nathan Brown, who's the Clerk of the Board, and David Modell, who's the Vice Chair, Luke Ascalillo, and Kate, are you where, oh yeah, and Kate Reed. So that's the five of us who are here tonight, and also Tim Goddard's, our Town Administrator. Thank you, Tim, and Jen Gibbons is here as the Administrative Assistant to the Select Board, and she's going to be taking minutes. So I want to offer a few comments before we take a few comments and then the Select Board is going to have some discussion and potentially take some, make some decisions about a few things regarding the pickleball proposal. And then we will open it up for community input. I should also say that Drew McMorro, who's the Chair of the Recreation Committee, is also on the call tonight with us now. But my comments have to do with just trying to provide more clarity and information about how the Select Board sees this proposal going forward and where we are as a group on it, because I, I think we've tried very hard. Once we received the initial presentation from the Recreation Commission, we wanted to make sure that the Recreation Commission was able to follow their, the process that they chose to, you know, provide information to the public and allow public participation in Recreation Commission meetings to get more information. And when it came to the Select Board, you know, initially, I think our response was, well, we're going to let folks, you know, read more, understand it more. And, and so until early December, we didn't have a formal conversation about the pickleball proposal, other than the brief presentation that we received from the RecCom Chair in an executive session with us. I think that was late summer. So in early December, when we first started discussing this, I think we got so focused on the details. You know, we were not as thoughtful about allowing for community input to the Select Board. And I know that, that, that we heard that from many people. And we got both emails and also just public comment. And so we agreed at, for the last Select Board meeting of December and for this Select Board meeting, we wanted to give plenty of time for community input, public comments about the pickleball proposal. And we're going to continue that tonight. And I applaud those of you that are participating. I think that's always a good sign when people care about what we're planning to do as a town. What we're going to do tonight in terms of the format is I, I'd like the Select Board to offer to the, the community, a better sense of where we are as a board on this proposal and what we see happening going forward. And so before we begin the public comment time, what I'd like to do is have the Board focus on a couple of questions. And they are, there are three questions that I think would be helpful for us to address as a board and see if we are ready to make any decisions tonight, or even just what the sense of the board is on them. And so one is, you know, we've heard from many people about the desire for the community as a whole to be able to weigh in on the pickleball proposal. And so the first question I'm putting to the Board is, do we want to support a warrant article on the town meeting agenda in April for a general vote on the, on the pickleball facility? And by general vote, I'm making the distinction between what is actually required in the grant agreement. And in the grant agreement itself, there is a financial mechanism that the town meeting would have to approve called an enterprise fund. And that is already planned at this point to be on the town meeting agenda. So what I'm raising with the Select Board is the question of an additional warrant article separate from that one that would be the broader, asking the town the broader question and the language would have to be, excuse me, the precise language would be worked out with help from Town Council, who I'm sorry, I should have recognized you earlier, Tom Harrington is here, Town Council, and also Ethan Lively. Thank you both for being here. So that's the first question. And then I might as well lay them all out there. The second is to discuss and confirm the timing of when we as a Select Board think we might actually take a vote on the grant proposal. Because for those of you that have looked at the grant agreement, there are several different approvals that have to be obtained in order for the grant agreement to go into effect. And one of them is approval from the Select Board. There's also approval required from the Planning Board and approval from the School Committee, because this proposal would involve crossing some school-owned land. So that's the second question. And as a part of that, I think is also typically the Select Board reviews all the warrant articles and the ones that are kind of relevant to whether or not the Select Board supports them. We typically then as a Select Board would do that in early March, when the actual warrant closes. So that if, for those of you that see that warrant book, when you go to town meeting or the one you, it's mailed to you typically to your home, if you look at the sort of major warrant articles, there's typically some notation at the bottom about different boards having taken a vote of yes or no on particular warrant articles. I'll just start with those two. So I'd be interested, I guess, in the other members of the Select Board, how you feel at this point and whether you generally favor the idea of having a warrant article that goes on the town meeting agenda. It's the broad warrant article around whether or not the community supports a pickleball facility in town.
So I just want to make sure I understand the question. So, and this is Nathan. The, the question is, do we, do we support? It's not, the question isn't, do we support putting it in town, in front of town meeting for something that the town can, I don't understand what the question is, I guess. It's, so it's a broad article about if the town supports it?
Correct.
Okay. And how is that different than what we were talking about a couple of months ago as to whether or not we would put it before town meeting? Is it all in the same thing?
Well, there, right now, the, this, what I'm deferring to is the Enterprise Fund warrant article is required in the grant agreement, the proposed grant agreement, because it allows the town to set up the, am I saying this right, Tom? Tom Harrington, the sort of financial instrument for the town to be able to have a pickleball facility in town?
Right, so the, so the grant agreement has kind of a number of gating processes that the town needs to go through, go through before it receives the grant. And one of them is that town meeting would authorize the establishment of an enterprise fund for the management and maintenance of the pickleball facility. So that, so that's there anyways. Barney, I think what you're suggesting though is, in addition, so in addition, and this is not just what the grant agreement requires, well, well, let me take a step back. You know, we can do it with or without an enterprise fund, but I think the desire is that they have an enterprise fund. But there's still a series of votes that need to happen before a pickleball facility could be constructed. And one of those is a vote of the selectmen that they would approve the use of their land for this purpose. So it's going to require a vote of the selectmen, but you can also put the same question before the town. And you can use that either as instructional or you can be bound by it. You know, you can, you can take the vote and say, we want to know what you're thinking and then we'll make our best decision. Or you can say, you know, we won't vote yes for this unless the town votes in favor of it. I think you could do a couple of things. Does that make sense?
Does that help, Nathan? Nathan, I think you might be muted.
Yep, I am. The, the two things are, one is just putting together the accounting structure to, to make it work well. And the other is asking the town, should we do it? And the question that you're asking Barney is about the second one, how we feel about that?
Right. Do we as Select Board members want to propose that? Do we have that second warrant article?
All right, thank you.
Tom introduces a new variable we hadn't considered, which is whether we vote and then let the town discuss, or do we discuss and then vote? That's yet another layer to that, right Barney?
When you, the layer being that we could, as a Select Board, take a vote that says we won't approve this unless the town approves it at town meeting?
Something, I mean, you know, Tom should weigh back in, but that's kind of what I heard is, I hadn't thought about that. I thought we were moving in the direction of we would debate it and then we would take a vote internally as to whether we supported it and that that would show up in the warrant book. And then there's a town debate and then we're, where you started with two different votes perhaps. But, or Tom, are you suggesting there might be another way, which is a conditional support if the town approves kind of thing? I mean, does it matter if the town doesn't approve, it doesn't approve, right?
Right, but so for, from the legal perspective, right? This is, this land that we're talking about, this particular part of the parcel is under the care, custody, and control of the Select Board. So if, if you would like to construct a pickleball facility out there, you can do so on a vote of this board without going to town meeting. If you are interested in what town meeting has to say on it, you can also put a warrant article before the town, asking them what they think of it. And that question, or the, or the answer to that question can either be binding or not binding. So, you know, you could use it as a referendum and then make your best decision. Or the, the board could by majority vote, say, we will be bound by the decision of town meeting.
Well, for, for the purposes of tonight, I'm just also, you know, considering the time. What if we just discuss the, the idea of a warrant article asking the town what they think? And the question of whether or not it's going to be binding or not, I would like to take up at another Select Board meeting, only because I'm, I'm my concern about the time. And I know there are different people on this call that would like to make comments. Is that something we can do? Is it, what's the sense of the rest of the members of the Select Board on whether or not we want the town to have an opportunity at town meeting to indicate whether or not they support this?
So I, I, I don't know who can see who. So this is Luke. Yeah, no, I, I mean, I have no issue putting it on, right? I, I, you know, to David's point, I mean, I think the, the board votes on whether or not we support it, right? I mean, we do that with all the warrant articles and that could turn out, you know, three, two, four, one, two, three, who knows, right? But, but that's not giving Select Board support for, you know, the overall article, right? Excuse me, it's just a sense of the word. But, you know, I, I don't know why we would put it on if we decided to go against what town meeting says. I think that's stupid. So, so in it, no, my opinion is that it would in a sense be binding, right? I mean, whether or not, you know, we want to make that official, I don't know. But, you know, when the town has spoken, the town has spoken. So that's, that's just my sense.
I also just had one question about, after, and it's been now a week since I've read the grant agreement. So I'd have to go back and look at it. But it seems to me that there was some timing that almost didn't allow us to have it contingent on town meeting. I don't, do we really have the time to let it be non-binding? Let's put it this way, non-binding. I think it either has to be up or down by the end of town meeting, as I recall in some of the language. But having said that, I have absolutely no objection of putting it on the, in fact, I would encourage it to go on town meeting.
Nathan?
So I would be in favor of, of putting it in front of town meeting. I think, you know, through the years of being on the Board of Selectmen, I've always been really, really careful to make sure that we're not putting in front of town meeting things that we should just be deciding and, you know. But I think that this is, this is one of those things where I just really think we need the town's input and it should go on.
And David?
Yeah, I think, so there's, there's kind of layers of things here. I, I agree with all of that. I mean, the town should weigh in just by the very fact that we've had a lively, we've had a lively debate about it. We're going to have another one tonight, a hearing, and it's been going on at RecCom and City in the Woods and everywhere else. So I mean, there's a lot of interest and the town deserves to be, you know, heard. I also agree that the technicalities of the financing warrant, while necessary per the grant agreement, are, will be confusing. And so I like the idea of putting a very simple kind of, does the town want pickleball, yes or no? Like that that's easy to understand and people can get around that and then there can be a vote about that. And if, you know, if it votes down, then of course you don't take up the financing portion and it votes up. We explain that now you have to agree to finance it and so forth. So I think that's a smart thing that you came up with and I support that. And yes, I believe we should do our duty as a Select Board to evaluate our own position on it in time to be published in the warrant, because, you know, the town deserves to know where we sit on that. And, and a school committee, I would encourage, should probably do the same, even though Tom says it's our land. I mean, it's, you know, there's a piece of it that involves a school, I guess. So, so I support all those things. I think we should do that. As far as timing, Barney, I think, you know, obviously, as you laid out prior to the published deadline. So whatever that means in February, I suppose, we still have this hearing, we have to talk to RecCom, maybe Planning Board, I don't know, Master Plan, you know, I mean, there's a bunch of things we should do, I think, to get the full input before we do our final deliberation.
All right, so what I'm hearing is that we definitely support putting this before town meeting as a straightforward, do you or don't you support the pickleball facility on this particular parcel? May I have a motion to that effect, please?
I move. I beat you to it, Kate.
Second. Great. Any more discussion on the part of the Select Board? Okay, well then let's do a roll call vote. Just because I'm at the head of the alphabet, I'll, I start. Arnold, I.
Ascalillo, I.
Brown, I.
Modell, I.
Reed, I.
All right, the motion carries unanimously. And so obviously we'll work with Town Council to figure out the exact language. Then I also am hearing that we should, as we would normally do, look at the relevant warrant articles that we should take a position on. We would do the same thing with this warrant article. And that's likely to be the end of February, maybe early March, in order for it to go into the printed warrant book. Am I hearing that correctly from everybody? I don't know that we need to take a vote on that, but.
But I think what we just decided was that it is going into the printed warrant book. But you know, these act warnings to be worked out. But it, in late February or March, we would be deciding, we would be voting on whether or not we, we supported it.
Exactly, sorry, I thought, yeah, that's what I was trying to say. That we would take a votes on, we would take a vote on whether or not we support it at that point. And so it'll be in the printed version.
I just didn't want people to think that there was another chance for us to not put it in the warrant book. We've just voted to put it in the warrant book.
Correct, correct. Okay, great. And lastly, we can, we can come back to this at the end, I think. But I did have a chat with Drew, the RecCom Chair, about potentially us doing a joint Select Board and Recreation Commission kind of an info session that's more just Q and A about whatever people want to ask about relative to this facility. Because tonight, we're not going to have time to, the, the information that Drew is going to present is going to be new, both to the Select Board. We have not seen it, well, some of the details we haven't seen before. The general proposal, yes, we've certainly seen before. But I believe we're going to see additional detail that neither the Select Board nor the members that are on the call will have seen before. So we want to allow time after tonight for people to absorb that, think about it, and then schedule some kind of a meeting that allows for a lot of back and forth question and answers. So with that said, let's move on. And, and I'd like to open the meeting to anyone who's on the call to offer comments about any aspect of the pickleball proposal. And again, I just suggest that if you want to say something, either if, if we can see you, you can just raise your hand. Although your name isn't, I don't see your name, I guess, if you have your, if we see your face, is that right, Tim? So I guess the only way to know who, who, your name would be if you do it. Ah, who just did that? That's great. Who put all the names up? Was up for a second and then went away. Anyway, what I was going to say is, so when you're, when you called on, just please remember to say your name and where you live. And, and then we would like to hear your comments. So I see that Mike Canower has his hand up. So Tim, are you able to?
Allow him. Yes, yeah, I think it might unmute himself, he can speak.
Okay.
Oh, thank you all for going through this process with, with, with such due diligence. It's, it's much appreciated. I've spent a fair amount of time looking into this. And, you know, even beyond the, the letter I sent to, to the Select Board on September 30th, I've really come to the conclusion that this is almost certainly one of the worst Trojan horses that the town has ever seen. I know that sounds like exaggeration, but I, I really believe this would be a monumental mistake. If somebody wants to build a regional pickleball mecca in in our small town. And we know it's it's meant to be regional because the estimates are the three quarters of the users of this facility will be out of town. I I I think that's a a terrible thing to ponder, but we have to look at at what that means. It's 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 a cheap, ugly looking building. I think we need to ask if we have the ability or the finances or the desire to operate and maintain this. Do we really even want to? We've got the means for a good number of pickleball facilities already in the town with the town tennis courts and perhaps some indoor facilities. For instance, the school gym. Land is very scarce for for any any community use. And I think we really need to to look at that very carefully, you know, and make sure that community use means for people who live in Carlisle. And we can look at water and sewer problems that almost every large facility in town is having. And and we need to ask, what is this going to do to our water, to our sewer? And and to future possible needs, maybe for a community center or or any possible school expansion. Further, I I think this whole process is putting the horse before the cart. You know, that we really ought to look at what we need, perhaps some of the elements of the master plan before we decide whether a facility like this might be appropriate. A project like this would probably block a a number of other projects on this scarce scarce land. Just for what we're hearing, you know, we we would require not only water and sewer, but 25 to 60 parking spaces. And 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 all the infrastructure and plowing and salting and so on, you know, to deal with that as as well as traffic. And tremendous amount of the people would be coming in from other towns. We would be developing yet more land largely for out of towners, which we so value, it just makes no sense for an environmental point of view. Or I believe from the point of view of maintaining, you know, open space. I I just don't think free is really free at all. And this project just, it 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 does scare me. And that's that, you know, that's, that's, that's the way I I I've been looking at this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. I wonder, Tom, just one point of clarification, would you mind explaining about the governance of a facility, if there was one in town, according to this grant agreement?
Sure. And I can, I can, I think I can probably go straight to the grant agreement to do.
Yeah, just briefly, but I think it might be helpful for everyone to understand what's in it and what's not in it regarding you know, who it's for and how it's governed.
Okay, so the governance really lies with hold on one second. So the town is 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 expected to form a committee that oversees the pickleball facility. And so it's it's really going to be it's going to be controlled by a a town-appointed committee. And I think that's important and I so the town committee has the responsibility to maintain the facility at a certain level. And it's, if you look at page five of the grant agreement, and I'm sure sure people have seen it, that's kind of where it goes through how to manage memberships and and the maintenance and that sort of thing, but but the the maintenance or the the operations are controlled by town committee and the town committee may consult with the with the donor, but certainly doesn't need to follow their direction. It's they are, they they're required to consult, but they're not required to do more than that. So it would, it would be controlled by the town.
Thank you, Tom. And I see that Daphna Krug Gordon has indicated she would like to speak. So Tim, if you could.
I I am unmuted.
You are unmuted. Great. Thank you. Whoops, you just muted yourself again. There you go. All right, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Daphna Kraut Gordon. I know some of you from our past dealings with the town. Our relationship with the town is I represent TIL toward independent living and learning. And we operate the two group homes that are directly in front of the proposed site. So that's one of the first things that I want to say. I know that it's not official so that we didn't have to officially get a letter saying what to notify us as a Butters, but in reading in the past few days and reading the grant and reading the proposal, it's just, there's no mention that we are actually a Butters and that any indication of respecting our position and frankly, how we're going to be impacted has been has been noticed by the proposal. So I just want to make it clear, we we occupy the front over at High Street and, you know, that's how you get into the location. So that's the very first piece. The other is that we are going to be impacted. I can't imagine in any positive way in terms of the traffic, the access to get to that part of the land. And I also, for the people who perhaps remember the roughly two years that we went through before we were able to actually build and occupy the two homes, we met with just about every committee, every commission. We had many public meetings and there was so much emphasis on the aesthetics of the two homes. So I find that in just direct contrast to suddenly slapping up a metal building, which does not fit into the aesthetic of the town, let alone the aesthetics of that particular area and our two homes, which turned out to be internationally recognized by the Architectural Board of of homes like this. And the other is, we spent a great deal of time confirming to people that we we were not going to be in imposition on the resources of the town as far as water and sewer. We had to put in special fire lanes really to make sure, even though the town was very positive and wanted this this kind of group home, the two groups homes there, one being for people with acquired brain injury, the other being for people with intellectual disabilities from the town and local areas. But there was a great deal of can't think of a polite way to say it. There's a great deal of questioning, let's put it that way, to assure that we were not going to impose on the town unfairly, disproportionately, and that we would be responsible for taking care of everything. I think four years later now, I believe the town confirms that we are good citizens, good neighbors, and that we are just part of the fabric of the town of Carlisle. So in contrast to what we went through, to think about a structure that is this large, that is so disproportionate to the demographic of Carlisle in terms of numbers that so many people would be brought in from outside. It just, I don't quite understand it, other than obviously, it's very appealing to get this kind of donation on the surface. It looks appealing, but being somewhat of a tennis and pickleball enthusiast, it's not the sport that I'm I'm commenting on. It's really the impact that it has on us specifically as a Butters. And also the, you know, the sense of ownership that we now have as being part of the citizens of Carlisle. So on all those grounds, the kind, the the initial proposal with really a community center, the beautiful way that it was designed makes so much sense and really what the fabric of of the community is all about, as opposed to what's being proposed here.
Thank you for your comments. Let's see, who else is waiting to speak? Debbie Bentley, I see your hand is up.
Okay. Hi, I'm Debbie Bentley. I live on Heald Road. My concern is, as many of you know, I'm a I design buildings as a profession and I'm very concerned about the cost of a building. I don't know where the 1.5 million dollars came from. But building a building isn't just a building, this is landscaping, it has external courts, it has parking. And when you do the mathematics, the building is actually not 10,000 square feet. It's actually more in the region of, well, if you're about between 12 and 14,000 square feet. The only facility I have found on the internet that is of a similar size is 14,000 square feet. So how much is this building costing a square foot? Where is the cost analysis of the building? This is before we even go anywhere, because building buildings is really, really expensive and takes a long time. We won't finish this building till 2023. At least the cost is just escalating out of control. I don't, I am really concerned, very, very concerned that you cannot build this building for 1.5 million. And who picks up if it comes into 3 million? Which is probably, I don't know, I haven't, I don't, I don't design sports facilities. I don't know how much they cost, but I don't think they cost this little if we're spending a million dollars on a playground.
Thank you. Who else would like to comment? I don't see any other hands up at the moment. Oh, wait, let's see. Oh, Angela, I think I see your hand up. Angela Smith? You have to un, yeah, there you go.
Hi, thanks for doing this. I'd also like to select board to thank them for all they're doing all the time. And I appreciate the care and concern that you all put into looking for our future. I too, like Mike, am very concerned that this isn't what our town needs. When I looked over the contract, I didn't see how we could meet the deadlines that are given. And even if we wanted to do it, I'm not so sure we could. And like Deborah Bentley, I'm concerned not only about the construction cost, but the ongoing maintenance costs. The fact that the building has to be maintained as a pickleball facility for 20, potentially 25 years. It sounds like it would serve approximately 100 people in Carlisle who are very enthusiastic and encouraged by this. But what about the 5,400 other people who might be better served by a community center? And yes, there's concern in money being set aside potentially. Again, I don't think the deadlines could be met net for a smaller community center. And I feel like anything we do should be started with, what do we need? How much space is that going to take? What does it solve for the town? The town doesn't have any place right now for a emergency shelter. It seems like we could use more space for voting for other community needs. And I don't see that this is going to fit our need in the end. We have to maintain it. We have to have personnel there. I just am not enthusiastic, although I too feel like it's a great thing to have more recreation. I think the Recreation Department does a magnificent job. And we're lucky to have them.
Thank you.
Hi, Dana Smith, her husband.
Oh, 158 Martin Street, I should have said.
Commercial, a commercial pickleball facility in another town can just shut down and vanish if the 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 interest in the the activity disappears or if profit is not adequate. Carlisle is going to be on the hook to satisfy an almost impossible startup schedule and a long-term expense obligation. Everything about this seems wrong. What happened the day before pickleball came up? Didn't we have an awful lot of long-term concerns about Carlisle's ability to 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 fund and and cite our own, you know, our own building needs? This this pickleball facility seems to have thrown the whole town on its ear. And and while I certainly recognize that it it sounds like a lot of fun, there are commercial places around here and quite frankly, most of the folks who would utilize this are able-bodied and certainly capable of going to Chelmsford or or any of the other local facilities that provide the opportunity. So I I don't think it makes any sense.
Okay, thank you. So I see that Christina, I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name, Christina, but I hope you will when you offer your comments, but I also see Dan Lennon and John Ballantyne and Peter Nash. So I'm just going to note on my list here. And I'll just call you in that order. So Christina, thank you.
Hi, thank you. It's Christina Christodolopoulos, Hemlock Hill. And I should say I am a member of the Master Plan Steering Committee, but I'm speaking just as a resident. There are so many pressing needs that Carlisle has. And so precious little land available, municipal land available to fulfill these needs, let alone fiscally speaking, that it just seems very rushed and it seems crazy to ju- just jump into something so specific, to dedicate a large portion of this parcel to something so specific. And the process has appears to be anyway so rushed and so pressured. And I fear that the actual ramifications of of this facility have not really been thoroughly vetted. And so I I just feel like maybe we need to stop. And I know that there's pressure to, you know, deadlines and you have to make decisions by a certain time, but it's like, well, why? We have to like stop, take a breath, do studies, see the impact on traffic, see the impact on the environment. See the impact, the fiscal impact. And so I just feel that, again, it's just being so rushed and so pressured. And we need to just sort of take a moment and like really do the studies. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dan Lennon, please.
Hi, thank you. Dan Lennon, 195 Stern Street. As a resident of the town, I just want to say first that I'm grateful for people who serve on these volunteer committees. I know that that they do so because they care about our town and that they put a lot of time and energy and passion into it. And I just want to say right out of the gate that I recognize that people are volunteering their time and I'm grateful for it. Also grateful that there seemed to have been some some creative this is some creative problem solving going on here. That the more most recent version of what's been proposed is to kind of tackle both a pickleball facility and also what has been on the town's mind for a long time, that being a community center and seeing how we can have both perhaps be on the same site. As a member, though, of our cultural council here in town, I am concerned about the the proposal that we reduce the the footprint of a community center in order to create a pickleball facility the way that the the donor, the the RecCom would like so that it will all fit on the same parcel. And that it's concerning to me because I know that we went through a very deliberative feasibility study for the community center. And took into account the resources that we have here in town and also compared our situation to other towns of similar size. And and the resources that they either did or didn't have there. He came up with a very specific recommendation for for the type of of facilities that be in a community center and and its actual square footage. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't really believe that there that a pickleball facility could double as, say, a a lecture space or a place to install fine art. I I I think that they they're two different things. And so as what my my summary here is that for a long while, Carlisle residents have said that there really, there is a real need for a community center that will benefit a a great number of people in our town. And I don't want to see And I don't want to see some other competing facility come in and, and take away from what is, is like I said, really going to benefit our, our, our town, in my opinion, in a, in a, in a larger way than a recreational facility. Thank you.
Thank you. John Valentine, please.
Yes, thank you very much. First, I just want to re-emphasize and underline the positive comments that many people have made and everybody's contribution and effort that they've made to do this. I have been a, a member of the council on aging and also a member of the master plan, but I'm obviously speaking for myself. I'm also agnostic on pickleball. However, I do think we need to look at our longer-term plans of what we're trying to do down in terms of the facilities and how we use that and also in Bantha Davis. And I know, and I was involved in the Benfield project years ago, the rec com forward a plan on their, their, their space and recreation needs and the number of playing fields and things like that. And so the question as I look at this is how does this fit into the overall longer-term needs of recreation and to what extent that means that we use Bantha Davis? Or if for some reason that we thought this school is going to need to use Bantha Davis? So it appears to me that there's a lot of sort of planning and thought that needs to be, need to go through in terms of the due diligence. Obviously there is a sort of time pressure in making this up. So our ability to do that is very limited. We're being asked to make a decision on a transaction where we may not have looked at the overall longer-term needs in terms of what Davis needs, where RecCom and all its facilities and playing fields will be and where the town's facilities will be. So I just think we need to kind of go through this in our usual deliberative way, getting people's input and try to make a decision that it looks at all the pieces and, and be respectful of everybody's involvement in doing this. Thanks, thanks.
Thank you. I just want to note that Wayne Mayer, I see your hand up and you, you'll be coming after Peter Nash. And then I see Joshua Noble, you have your hand up. So just know that I've been keeping a list here. So Peter Nash, please. Thank you.
Thank you Barney. I would say I, I, I respect this deliberative process that we're going through. I think it, I think it's valuable. I think it's important. I will say that I, though I don't play a lot of pickleball, I am in support of this for three, three reasons. First, I've lived here for 24 years and I know for many people that's, makes me still a newcomer. But I've heard talk about some sort of community center for years and years and it's good to think about it. But this is the first time that we've really had something concrete with some funding that we can move forward on. And it seems like such an opportunity that I'm concerned that this is going to slip through our fingers. Second, th- this town does not have a lot of extra funding. So anything that we do outside of this potential gift facility, that's going to be on our own dime and there aren't many dimes around Carlisle for this type of, type of opportunity. And this building, yes, pickleball, but it does have the potential, maybe won't check all the boxes of serving some other needs. And third, I would say success begets success and accepting this gift is going to send a message to a potential future donor because let's be honest, the any, anything we do in the future is going to require outside donors that Carlisle is a place that can make things happen. Conversely, if we say no or we make this path to yes incredibly painful or difficult, no donor is going to want to consider us in, in the future. So, you know, thank you everyone for, for their, for their input on this and I would just say that I am in support of it and I, I hope it happens.
Thank you. Wayne Mayer, please.
Yes, Wayne Meyer on Woodland Road. So it's, it's very good to hear everybody's thoughts on this. And I, it does seem that there's a lot of concern over the process and, and I get that. I don't know that, I guess there's a timeframe that's out there that is expected to progress and people want to be thorough about that and I, I totally respect that. But I, I guess some of the things, now my understanding is this is money that is set aside as a grant and inside that is to generate and make this thing be self-sufficient. Everybody keeps talking about this is going to be a drain on the city and, and we can't afford it. When I went to the original proposal by Drew, his first meeting, it was on the tennis courts one Sunday evening. He had said that this was going to be self-sustaining. There was money set aside in it that, and plus the memberships and everything, it would cover the one person that need to run it. It would cover the maintenance. It was meant to be not a drain on, on town facilities, on town monies. And I don't know if that's changed, but that's what I recall. Cause that seems to be a big concern that it's going to take away from something else. So I don't, again, we don't have to go over the yay or nay of that, but that's one thing that I clearly remember was this was not going to be a drain. I guess the other thing that I think about is Carlisle, I mean, we have Great Brook. We have the Cranberry Bog, right? We have a lot of things that have people come in from other areas and I think we appreciate that. And we like the fact that some people outside of Carlisle get to enjoy Carlisle, right? I know having moved here a couple of years ago, right? We use everything around Carlisle to run our daily lives. We got our gas outside of Carlisle. We get our groceries outside of Carlisle. We go to CVS outside of Carlisle. In order for us to sustain living in this city, we have to go to all these other ones to get what we want. And we go, you know, we use Emerson or Ride Out or all these other places, the rail trail and all these kinds of things. So I think it's reciprocal that it works both ways. And I do think that it does highlight that people can see what Carlisle can be. I guess the final thing that I would say is I forgot what my final thing was. I was going to say, it was a really short one. But anyway, I'll, I, I can't recall it right now. I don't want to take a lot of time. So those are my two things for now.
All right. Thank you, Wayne. And then Joshua Noble. And I'll just comment that we got a couple more minutes and we definitely want to hear from anyone that would like to make a comment that hasn't already done so. So please do raise your hand or wave at some point. Thanks. Yes, Joshua.
Thank you. Hey, everyone. Joshua Noble, 160 Stern Street. I won't comment too much on financials. I will say if you can build a facility of this caliber and continue to operate it for 1.5 million, I have a bridge to sell you. Beyond that, I live at 160 Sterns. I live about quarter of a mile from the location in question, a little, about a little over a thousand feet. Bantha Davis is literally my back, a butter to Bantha Davis, to give you context. You know, regularly my two young children, my wife will walk down the street, Stern Street. We'll walk across Fox Hill Trail, which goes right through Bantha Davis, the Fox Hill Land, the Mosley Lands. You know, having a building back there, I think would kind of, you know, impede that trail quite a bit. I know a lot of young children walk to that trail to and from school from time to time as well. Beyond that, we had an eight acre lot in front of our house. The town allowed a few developers to subdivide that lot. And now I have two giant houses in front of me that have been built. And since that construct taking place over the last year or two, we have noticed a significant reduction in wildlife. It would be every day that we'd see deer, owls, bobcats, you name it. And now we have almost zero wildlife around our house. And I think if, you know, we were to put up a new building in an area which is already pretty quiet to begin with, I think we'd be using up some land that really, you know, should be enjoyed by those who want to enjoy nature. And so that's all I have to say on the matter.
Thank you, Joshua. And then I see Sandy Nash has her hand up and then also Adrian Klimski. So Sandy Nash, please.
Oh, well, one of the downsides of being the last up to talk pretty much is that everybody said all the talking points that I would say. Really, I love the idea of opening our borders to other towns. I feel that that's the right thing to do. We tap hard into other towns for a variety of different reasons. I'm a big supporter of any and all recreational opportunities. We fully support getting people outside and getting them moving. Pickleball is here to stay. It's not going anywhere. And I feel that it, you know, covers a big span of demographics from people who, I mean, it's baked into our school curriculum for gym. It's been demonstrated to be very helpful for rehab and senior citizens just staying active and everything. So there's no downside to pickleball. I think that the rec department has done a super job of doing due diligence of, you know, how it's going to be built and the, the resources and finances behind it. I just wish that we could all be supportive of projects and recreational opportunities that don't necessarily benefit us, even if you're not a pickleball player. Yes, I'm admittedly addicted to pickleball, but even if you're not, please try to see the, the good side of this project and please try to see that the gift is a gift to our town. And, and we need to sort of not be looking, if we say no to it, we, we better not sort of be looking five to 10 years out with the town realizing that pickleball is here to stay and we then have to tap into tax dollars to build a facility because we, you miss this opportunity. So again, I'm really not saying anything that people that support this project haven't already said. I just really hope that people take the time to learn about this project so that we can move forward with it. I, I don't, I'm in full support of it.
Thank you. And Adrian.
Hi, so Adrian Klimski and I live on Blaisdell Drive. And I've really been trying to actually do exactly what Sandy is describing, which is to look at this from a lot of different angles and try to, you know, collect as much information about this. And I really want to echo the concerns that I've been hearing today. I've been so impressed by the process that the town has gone through to determine its priorities and its future direction. In pickleball, really, pickleball and the proposal as it's written, I really don't honor or align with that process. So I really want to echo and support what I've heard this evening, especially but not limited to Mike, to Daphna and to John, that there are so many opportunities for our town to be creating and developing assets that benefit multiple facets of the Carlisle community. And a massive pickleball facility is not it, really, for the reasons that I'm not going to repeat sort of at the end of the meeting, but that have really come up consistently. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to everyone that has offered comments. I do want to move ahead now to Drew McMaro. Thank you Drew for being here because he has some presentation to offer us that I think will provide some additional information to everyone. So I hope everyone will stay with us that's interested in the pickleball project. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you Barney. I suppose I should be able to share my screen with me.
Yeah.
Time to do that and make sure that I've been authorized. Give me one moment while I expand all views so I can see where.
Yep, it's a.
This is, okay. Great. And so I was asked to address three questions. My presentation is limited to that. And I know that we're already over time Barney, so I'll try and go quickly. And now we'll send you these figures later. So the first question I was provided was as complete as you have the proposed building design and cost, making clear what a million and a half covers and what it does not. So the grant agreement is quite clear about what it covers. It's, you know, that's covered in section six. Section six lays out the, the minimum design requirements, which does include outdoor courts. Section nine specifies the permitted use of the grant funds. Section 10 lays out a process of three installments of grant funds, the engineering reimbursement, design costs, and then ultimately construction costs. And under section 10, the town is obligated for construction costs in excess of 1.5 million. But I want to be clear that I think the grant agreement, it protects us from a, a, any excess cost or liability under this because in municipal construction, construction, construction costs are done on guaranteed bids. So once we've got through the design process, we would get to a public bidding process. And under that public bidding process, we would agree to a construction contract that guarantees the cost at under the total of 1.5 million. If that doesn't happen, we don't accept the bid and the project doesn't move forward. Probably more likely, something different would happen and the donor would agree to fund more rather than not see it happen. The donor seems aware that, you know, construction costs can fluctuate and they're quite committed to seeing the project. So I think if the town got all the way to design and approval, they would find a way to make the rest of it happen. But in no case, you know, would the town end up obligated for excess construction costs. But I can say, and you know, I had the help of town council and building those contingencies into the agreement. As to the cost of, of the construction, I don't know if this is going to be.
Excuse me Drew, sorry Drew, is there a way to enlarge the screen?
Yeah, I was just going to do that. I was going to ask.
Oh, great. Great. And yeah, thank you.
It's going to be, it's going to be tough, but the, the overall construction that I, that I've come up with under current building costs and this is from various, you know, consultants and contractors and other sources that I've used to come up with it. Comes out at really right under 1.5 million, you know, 1.46 million. And yeah, I had the help of Stamsky and McNary. Patriot Steel is the main contractor, the donor made connections with to, to estimate the cost of the building. You know, the, the cost of pickleball construction comes from things like Sportmaster surfacing. I consulted with Vertex Incorporated on various aspects of construction, including structural engineering. Stamsky and McNary weighed in as to various costs, Fisher Designing, some of the landscape, landscape costs. But I can send you this and as I said, you know, it is hard to know what a construction cost is ultimately going to be. Anybody in the business will tell you that they can be quite variable. But you know, that is the end of the process, not the beginning. So the, the end of the process, we would decide to put out a general bid and, and to see if, you know, somebody will build it for that. And if they wouldn't, we wouldn't. Do you have any questions about the construction? Questions from the select board members on the construction piece?
I, I have one Drew. David Modell here. Just, there's no contingency in that list though. What, what doesn't one normally have a contingency?
I think I'm having trouble hearing you there. Sorry. I'll turn you on. Try again with that.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
There, there's no contingency line. Isn't there normally a contingency line in a budget?
Yeah, I didn't have a contingency line in here. I think. Yeah. So in that contingency line wouldn't necessarily be in a guaranteed contract, but it would be in a budget estimation process. Okay.
So just, this is Barney Arnold. Drew, you said you'll make this available. So will this, will you post all of the, this information on your, where will you post that? On the rec com site or?
I'll send it to you and I'll send it to Tim. I love him.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put it up so that it's available to the public as well as the select board.
Yes, and I want to be clear as people might, you know, have different estimates for these things. Again, this is not to suggest that this would be the cost or that the town or something over this. That's not the way the process works.
Right, okay. Thank you.
All right, we'll go back into reading view. So the next question, the projected operational costs detailed, details on projected revenue and the assumptions that are built into it. I previously sent you an economic model of this based on a membership model and projected operational costs. And I'll go into some detail about how those were generated and how this works. But you know, just at the, at the high line, it, you know, it was a sanity check to say, hey, would this be viable? Would it cost the town money or actually could the town generate? would this be, uh, viable? Would it cost the town money or actually could the town generate funds, uh, from this? So, uh, so this, this was the, uh, this was the model. I know that you all had some questions about it, but let me see if I can answer them those before we get to those questions. I had also provided in my presentation, estimates of memberships and what the fees for those memberships are. Uh, and so really, when you're talking about the cost of this, the questions you're asking are, what will it take to, to run it, to keep the lights on and so forth? Uh, and how much will it take to, uh, break even on that? And then, you know, in excess of that, uh, generate additional funding from it, uh, for contingencies down the line or for long-term capitalization. Uh, and, uh, you know, where, where are you getting those, those numbers in terms of how many memberships you could sell? Or, uh, what the cost of those memberships would be? Uh, and so these are the estimates that we have provided. We don't know for sure how many people would, uh, sign on. We estimated how many would be Carlisle versus non-resident because, uh, we had intended to model a discount for Carlisle residents. We'd be thrilled if the entire facility were filled with uh, Carlileans and, uh, and Concord residents, uh, who, who would have preference for this. It's quite possible that it would be. The number of memberships that are in here, uh, just for some benchmark comparison, uh, the town of Dartmouth, Massachusetts has a pickleball facility with 550 members. Uh, and just, you know, for the context of the area that we are in, the BD center has, uh, pre-pandemic had 3,300 uh, paid memberships. So we don't consider these number of total memberships to be outside of the bounds of, uh, you know, in fact, we think that would be, the town would be confronted with the, the task of really sort of managing how many members it, it, uh, it wants, uh, more than being able to find the demand for it. Because as you know, there's a lot of demand, uh, for pickleball and pickleball facilities. Uh, as to the, uh, the fees that we would charge, and here we had essentially, uh, you know, a, uh, $50 a month, uh, individual membership for, for a Carlilean, uh, 60 for a non-resident and a big discount for families which only go up to 70 and 90. I have, uh, looked at part pricing benchmarks locally and around the country. Uh, on this, the most facilities charged by, uh, the hour of court use or some combination of membership fee and, uh, court fees and the, uh, roughly the equivalent. So the reason I didn't do that is it's much more come, come, it's a much more complicated model to explain to the mob, to the, to the, to the public. And I'm not the one setting prices. There's a governance committee for that and I'm not pretending to be the one to be setting prices on this. Uh, but, uh, the equivalent, uh, cost per hour, if you were just to use a court fee model for the membership model, uh, would be about $20 an hour. And that would assume that a, that a, that a member was playing 10 hours a month and only playing, uh, in doubles, uh, and, you know, paying their, their $5 an hour uh, share of a $20 an hour court fee. Locally, court costs are much, much more than that. Um, you know, for instance, Pickles of Hanover has an $80 a month membership plus $20 an hour. Uh, and they have, they have access to man by understanding, uh, you know, even over in Concord, the punt gym is selling for $40 an hour. So uh, I'm not saying again that I'm interested in setting the fees or setting them higher because I think one of the nice things about this being owned by the town is that it can be uh, priced in a way that makes it an affordable sport, particularly for Carlisle residents, but sanity checking whether or not you can charge that much. It's, you know, what we're talking about in our model is well less than the prevailing cost. Uh, nationally, looked around the country at many facilities, listed them here, and again, uh, many of them are much, much more expensive. So I've done the best I can to, to research, uh, what the cost of these are and what a fair price would be. Uh, it set the price lower than what would be fair and the economics, uh, do work out. Uh, to David Modell's question to me, which was, what, uh, you know, what would the town need, uh, to, uh, in order to, uh, make sure, you know, uh, it wasn't a drain on the town, sort of a break even price, roughly half the memberships that I projected would get us to a break even, uh, cost. As to the operational cost, I had put in your cost details. Uh, and I'm giving you some sources of information about where, uh, I generated those estimates. Uh, you know, the biggest item is a professional athletic, uh, facility manager, not very, uh, expensive. Uh, I used blast storage to generate what the cost that would be and grossed it up for, um, benefits factors. Uh, various things like website, uh, the utilities, which we had projected our construction budget would be solar are highly subsidized by the solar production from the rooftop uh, of this, which would be, uh, priced for in the construction. Uh, and then, you know, there are other pieces like pest control and insurance and so forth. And I have some uh, estimates in here. Again, the lion's share is, uh, is the payroll, uh, of this. Any questions about, uh, the economic model before I get into the last question?
Um, I just want to make the point that you note on the bottom of your, um, your, um, first slide, you know, about the cost estimates is that, um, the pricing is determined by the governance board. I, I just think that's an important thing for folks in town to understand is that, it's not going to be set by some outside entity. Uh, it's going to be, and, and it's, these, the membership, um, numbers, the, the, the costs, the potential pricing, those are all suggestions. Those are not going to be written into the grant agreement. Uh, this is just to give us a sense of what's going on in other facilities and what, um, and how, how this might work in Carlisle. So I just want to emphasize that again. Uh, so folks understand this will be within the control of the town to determine the exact numbers on this.
Pricing user fees in a municipal context is all about, you know, trying to get the right price, right? Enough to make it viable, but also as little as possible so that users can enjoy it.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one broad one, which is, um, so I sent, see under payroll, you have one, uh, overall manager.
Yes.
So, um, I thought I read or heard in some other presentations about the opportunity to offer uh, lessons and, you know, um, sort of programming. Would you, would that be?
I haven't modeled that because I would assume that that would be paid by the, by the fees.
That's what I was wondering because I know some people have asked about how could one person do all of that? So this, okay.
And I, one other thing I'll mention, I did find, uh, other, two other facilities nationwide of similar size that did have their, you know, profits and loss statements out there, their costs. So Steamboat Springs, Colorado has, uh, annual costs, or sorry, annual revenue of 180,000, annual cost of about 130,000. And Charlotte, a facility in Charlotte, North Carolina, uh, which is eight courts, has 209,000 of costs. So, you know, in the ballpark of what, uh, what we're doing. Of course, they have membership less, they have lessons and so forth. The cost can go up, but also can, can fees depending upon what program you offer and so forth. Uh, and, you know, we don't envision that the facility would have to be, again, this is not something I decide, but one possibility is that a facility could also be self-service. You don't necessarily need somebody there if members have a code or a card and can go in.
Thanks. I, yeah, I am conscious of the time, but I really appreciate this, Drew. Yeah. Did you have more?
Uh, I just. I, oh, I didn't, I didn't get the parking question. What was your, what was the parking?
Well, just about, um, what, what is envisioned in terms of parking and, and, uh, addressing concerns about traffic?
Right. And again, the, you know, and you know this Barney, this is all about, uh, under the grant agreement, the grant agreement would, would build a design committee, would actually make the decisions about how much parking to propose. In the construction, I modeled 50 spaces. Uh, and, you know, that, that anticipates more than will be needed for pickleball, but in, uh, an additional so that when we build a community center on the other side of it, at some point, we would be able to leverage that infrastructure. But again, those decisions are beyond my category.
Yeah.
Um, your, the last question I had gotten was, uh, what is the risk of town assumes that the rec com pays for the site plan? Uh, and the project doesn't go forward and gets voted down at town meeting. I think that the, that price is as low as 6,000, though. Stamsky McNary and McNary has been a little bit cagey about it. Uh, a full site plan review was quoted at 54,500, a full site plan review all the way through the planning board and so forth would not be needed, uh, you know, before the town meeting. Uh, so it's probably more than six because we did want to include some site planning for the, uh, the community center, but I can't be specific as to that. But I think, you know, uh, more than six, but less than 12, uh, from the revolving account next manager.
Um, I, I know that there are other questions people have and I, uh, want to just emphasize that this will not be the final opportunity for people to, um, raise questions and, and consider the information that Drew's provided. So, um, I thank you Drew for providing this information. And yes, as soon as you provide it to Tim, we'll make sure it's available to the public. Does anyone else on the select board have any specific general question? I have one more thing I want to, uh, put out there uh, before we move on to the next item on our agenda. Then if not.
I just wanted, I just wanted, uh, to say that there are several questions in the chat. I hope those will, those will get transcribed and, uh, that we'll keep track of them. And then we'll get back to, um.
And that we can, we can address them in a future. Yeah, yeah. Um, I, I, I do want to point out both to the community, but also to the select board in particular, that we, uh, have the ability to make suggestions about changes in the grant agreement. And so we should think about that, um, based on the input we're getting and, and future input. And I, I don't want to say anything more about that tonight, but I just want everybody to know that that is, is within our purview as the select board. It might not be accepted by the, um, foundation, but this is our opportunity, uh, now and over the next while um, to, to make, uh, a specific suggestion about changes. Yes, David?
Yeah, just one, uh, one of the comments that probably should be addressed right now. Drew, there was a comment as to whether the cost estimates you received were for municipal construction compared with private construction, because we know there's quite a difference when the municipality engages in a project.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right. I, I know folks have more to say, but I apologize, we're out of time. Um, and I know there are other people, uh, coming up on the agenda that have been waiting patiently as well. So again, uh, we will continue this, um, and the, we will arrange for a, a follow-up session with the Rec Creation Commission as well as the Select Board to delve into more of the details with everyone. Thank you very much for those of you who have joined us tonight around the pickleball conversation. Um, Chief Fisher, thanks for your patience and, uh, understand Victor Liang, I think you're also here representing the Finance Committee. Um, so thank you both, uh, for being here tonight. And I'm, we'll turn it over to the two of you.
Uh, thanks very much. And, uh, I sent out the, uh, PowerPoint presentation, well, just, uh, two slides to, uh, talk to folks, um, or to use as a guide tonight.
So hold on one second, Chief, and, uh, let me just ask, are you, Chief, do you have those to share? Or Tim, were you gonna share those with, um, all those on the call?
I'm hoping that Tim can bring them up. Just, I've, um, I'm having a little problem, um, VPN'ing over to my other computer to, to grab those off. I had them up, but, um, it went, this went a little longer than I thought and I, my, uh, I'm not able to get the VPN to work right to get the PowerPoint presentation up. So, um, I could either ask if Tim could have let Victor share his screen. Victor has them. Or if Tim has them, or if Jen has the ones I sent over. Uh, a few others have them, but I'm, I'm not able to access mine right now.
That's okay. Let's see, um, Victor, I see you're on the call. Are you able to, if, if, uh, Tim gives you the, the host ability, are you able to share your, those slides? I don't, I don't see Tim.
I'm, I'm here.
Okay.
I, I think I can find the slides unless Victor is prepared to share right now, but it might take.
I'm actually looking for them. So if you have them or you can find them before me, I think, why don't we have a little race here, see who can find it first?
All right.
Okay.
They're in the packet.
Here we go.
Hey.
Excellent.
All right.
But, uh.
Thanks a million. See if I can. Uh, I'm having a problem being able to, I can, I guess I can. Uh, all right.
Tim's gonna have to remove it for you.
All right, I got, I think I'm, I think I'm, I'm grabbing them. Okay. Um, so here's the problem. Overtime costs, working schedules, injuries, work-life balance pursuits and police reform legislation made our current way of doing things untenable. I think, uh, I've shared that information with you folks. For example, in FY '21, and we logged over 4,000 hours of overtime by the fourth, uh, four, uh, by the full-time officers at an apartment. And we have two officers out for injured on duty knee issues. Uh, neither one of them from catastrophic injuries, but from, um, overuse is how they were categorized. Um, as a result, um, our implications are, we have an increased expense. Our spend is, is roughly the same that Lincoln spends for 13 full-time officers. So our 10 full-time plus the complement of part-time folks, we're spending, in essence, about as, as much as it would take to run a full-time department. Um, and unfortunately, one of the other implications is that, um, the force-ins negatively impact the morale of the police department.
Just describe that a little bit, uh, Chief, what you mean by force-ins?
Well, for example, last weekend, we had five force-ins. Last week, I, I can't even remember how many we had. So those are officers that are off, they're home. Um, obviously, we were hit with, uh, with COVID last week. One of our full-time officers who was working 40 hours, uh, came down with COVID. And those folks had to be ordered in. So no part-time officers took the shifts. And no full-time officers volunteered, um, to, uh, come in. Um, so we had to order people in. So the difference between full-time and part-time, our full-time officers can be ordered to come in. In other words, you don't have a choice. Um, so, and the morale piece of that is, is important.
Yep.
It's, it's not a good thing. So.
Ask a quick question. So you're saying on the 4,000 hours, that's, there, there's 4,000 hours of like another police officer hasn't, wasn't able to come in because they were sick or something. So somebody else had to fill into them for them. So across 10 police officers, they had to fill in 4,000 hours, which is almost another full work day per week?
That's, yeah. It's, it's, it's significant. I, you know, it's each, I mean, it's.
It's 10, it's 10 police officers filling in for 4,000 hours. That's just enormous. Interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I've, I've tried to describe this in as many ways as possible. So, you know, we have the way we do things. And then you have a full-time police department that operates with it, in essence, the same budget. And they only use their part-time officers for road details. They don't use them for patrol. They don't use them to fill shifts. Yet, with our folks, you, you know, we're, we're spending a significant amount of money to cover overtime. Now, we had, you know, we had, we've had an officer out over inju- out injured for over a year. And we've had a, another officer that's been on and off over the last three years, but it's been gone about a year and a half of the last three years since currently out now also. And obviously, we heard that from Maya, but without, without getting too far in the weeds, you folks have, I, I think you've pretty much heard this before.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to, in as few words as possible, describe what's going on and, um, what we're thinking we need to do.
Thank you.
To the last, um, yeah, the last piece is, um, I think maybe a working session, a couple of working sessions, uh, would help, um, to maybe identify, prioritize and, and figure out exactly, um, are there any other solutions out there? Because you've had other people weigh in. are there any other solutions out there? Because you've had other people weigh in. And you know what my ideas are, and you know, maybe it's the working group idea will be, would be the way to go. And the other thing I think we definitely need is a temporary full-time position. We have an officer pursuing a disability retirement. I don't know if that's gonna happen. But they may retire in three to six months. But the way we're doing things right now is it's not, not gonna work, does not work. I can jump to the next slide. So what would this working session look like? I think two, two-hour facilitated work sessions, Victor's offered to facilitate this. I think folks that, you know, might be included in this Officer Seminatory, who's a part-time police officer, I'm gonna use Carrie Baxter, she's volunteered to do it instead of Michael Photo. So I think I would, I think it's important to have the President of the Union there, Steve Mack, so he said he would do it, and I, I think a select board member should be there too. So that, you know, two, at the most, two, two-hour sessions, so that we come to the next select board meeting in two weeks. You know, I think, hoping with everyone have weighed in, taken a look at this, and you know, how do we move forward? So anybody have any questions? I'm trying to be respectful of time. I know, I don't want you folks to get behind time.
We're okay, John, we've got till eight forty-five.
Excellent. Victor, you and I have batted this around quite a few times. Is there anything that we've discussed from ten thousand foot level that you think it would help to bring forward? I talk about this so frequently, I sometimes
No, I, I think you, I think you've captured essentially, you know, our conversations. And, and just as a backdrop, I think, you know, Chief Fisher has brought up what he feels is the solution, which is really to go to a full-time force and needing to add, you know, the number of individuals that he's kind of requested. And I think this is really kind of doing that, that one last, you know, check, because the reality is that, you know, the, this part-time part, full-time, part-time setup has been in place for a while. And the biggest challenge right now is that if you look at Lincoln and us, why are the, why are the budgets the same? It's, it's really because of the overtime, because you're paying, you know, time and a half. You know, for the, for the overtime for these individuals. Now, this is outside of the other issues that the chief is dealing with, which regards engagement and, you know, the forcins and things like that, but purely from a finance committee meeting, you were looking at this and saying, well, why? Well, let's see if there are solutions that can can be kind of put into place where we can get it to the place. So conceptually, I think, you know, ten full-time officers and leveraging part-time, you know, would yield a, a smaller budget. But the reality is the way it's operating right now, and there's lots of reasons, and I think Chief has gone through these reasons with you. That leads to this overtime, but let's do one go around here and get, you know, kind of a cross of different people to, to brainstorm, you know, let's take a look at how overtime is assigned and just to kind of fill in a bit, and you may already know this, you know, I think the overtime, you know, comes from a number of different places. One is when a full-time officer goes, goes on leave, then somebody else has to cover for him and vice versa. And just based upon the numbers that he has right now, you know, that's what's causing a bit of the overtime. The other stress point is really having, you know, there's one extended individual that was on kind of a medical leave and now there's a second one. I think that exacerbates the issue. So I think this kind of suggestion here is really to say, hey, you know, Chief Fisher has done his due diligence. He says he's kind of looked at in different ways of approaching this. His, you know, feeling and his leadership, he's saying that, that the best way to do this is to to go to a full-time force because of some of the dynamics that he's highlighted in the past. And this is really kind of the, the dot, the I, you know, cross the T and say, hey, are there ideas that, you know, were missed? And we all miss things and maybe there are, maybe they're not, maybe there's some ideas that come up that when you add it all up, yeah, it, it can help, but the reality is, is that it will reduce overtime by a hundred hours or two hundred, it's not enough, right? So I think that's the kind of the notion around, you know, doing this, this session. So those are just some of my comments on working with the chief and talking about this, this approach.
And Victor and Chief Fisher, how do you, what, what's the you say here that under the timeline that the finance committee is gonna discuss the full-time officer request? Is that something you're gonna take a look at soon, Victor?
So I think the timeline and we probably should have put a date on that, it's sequential. You know, the, the way I kind of see it is, and we, you know, you know, I think we go through this conversation with regards to adding headcount, whether it's the police department or anywhere else, is that really it's a select board, you know, decision between the select board and and as it comes through, then it comes to us from a finance perspective to look at what can the town afford in that? So like, what I probably should have put there is like Feb, we should have put there is like February, you know, once the, the sessions are conducted, the work sessions are done, the outputs reviewed with the select board, and certainly you guys can have a dialogue, and maybe you need more than one session to say, you know, based upon what the output of that is, yeah, I think there's enough solutions here that maybe we should continue to, you know, try to work with the, the part-time setup if we implement some of these things, or maybe it's yes, it, it's gotten some savings and, and maybe it's approving one headcount in addition to supplement. Or maybe it's two, and whatever select board comes up with, then it comes to FinCom to just review from a financial standpoint. And obviously, we probably want to hear, I would have already heard it, but I think the broader FinCom would want to hear, you know, what were the ideas, what was the board of select, a select boards kind of discussion and, you know, the reasons why they decided that they wanted to go a certain direction on this. So that probably should be in February, and I think that was done somewhat to fit the budget timeline. Because of, obviously, we have to finalize that in advance of, you know, putting the, you know, the warrant book together and such.
Thanks. Other questions from the select board?
Easy group tonight. David?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, John, thanks and hi. Can you just give us a quick summary, two sentences on what the police reform legislation, what's the meaning of it, what's the impact to Carlo?
So just a couple of the impacts are that the part-time officers, there's no such thing as a part-time officer anymore. You have to, you have to take a full-time academy or a full-time equivalent. And we have folks going through that already. You have up to three years. The other things that there've been real specific on is enforcing the amount of money that the police officers can make, retired full-time officers. So where that wasn't such a big deal for us, now it is a big deal. They can make fifteen thousand dollars over their salary. And our folks that are working, that are, are patrol-able, that already have full-time academy, are income limited. Does that, does that make sense? So if they work shifts for us, I mean, if, if we use, say, three of them and we use them to work the first few months of the year, you know, maybe the two shifts a week instead of two shifts a month like we do now, they're going to reach their maximum that they're allowed to make in March. You know, it's, it's
So are you, are you facing, I mean, setting aside whether you whether part-timers are efficient or not, are you having a crunch on just getting part-timers enough hours for part-timers?
Well, I'm, I'm having in one, once that clock started last July, for example, like our part-time officers are in charge of tracking that themselves. They can, they can ask us, but they're in charge of tracking it themselves. So I know, I know from our experience that they'll, they'll quickly reach the numbers.
And, and And then you have to call in overtime, is what you're saying.
Well, then it has to be a full-time officer. So even if they're not volunteering for the, the shifts like last week, like the
Forcing.
Three, three patrol shifts that turned into forcins with Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they all had a chance to work them. And none of them maxed out, it just, you know, it's, it's a part-time gig is different than, we, I Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, it's forcing, setting aside whether you're biased toward having full-time force, there's a, the legislation is forcing us in that direction. Because of the needing the training and the income caps on the retirees.
Absolutely.
Okay, so let me, let me ask Victor a question. So Victor, if I understood you, you said like the select board should weigh in first and then FinCom could take it up? It seems that that's reversed, like shouldn't FinCom also be telling us what, you know, the budget can afford as a piece of information that helps us decide what to do?
I think, maybe I should make sure it's a little bit more clear in terms of, I think, select board has identified that this is a need for the town. I think, you know, from that standpoint, then we certainly chime in on, in terms of the financial part of it. I think the other ad, and because I've been elbow, actually I've been in the pool, actually, I'm not elbow deep in the pool, learning about all of this stuff with the chief, which has been great. I mean, that's one of the reasons why I joined FinCom is to learn more about the town. And I think another implication around this.
Haven't you learned enough? How many years have you been on the?
Not, I haven't learned everything yet. So and this police reform is kind of an interesting one. I think the additional impact that it has is really the ability to recruit. Because, you know, it's my understanding, and, and John, certainly correct me if I, I got this wrong, is that historically, you could actually go and try to hire an individual who's a, a young individual trying to get into the the police profession, and you could bring him in as a part-timer. And, and you know, and be able to see how he's doing, and then make a decision whether to send him to the academy. At this point, that there is no avenue for that. So in a certain sense, it, it, it kind of shuts out a, a pool of potential recruits. And that's why the, the second bullet item that you actually see, you can still see on the screen here, in terms of brainstorming, I think you're gonna have to really think about the recruiting approaches, because really, your, your segment is very, very small now, it's just retirees pretty much, that you can.
So, I'm, yeah, I'm I, I'm glad, you know, you brought that up. I, I think two, two following comments. One is I'm glad that Chief Fisher has asked a part-timer to be part of the working session, because I know the part-timers have some specific feelings about the direction, so that's good. And then the second question, I guess for John is if, if we went ahead with the temporary hire of a full-timer, and then, if I understood you correctly, if one of the officers chooses not to retire but comes back from the IOD, that, that temporary individual then doesn't have a job, is this like a short-term contractor? Like the way teachers do it if somebody's out on leave, or how does that work?
No, it's a great question, but we can't do that, which is one of the things I'd ask for. It's, it's a position. So I think that that would not be fair, because th, this, this job's a profession. And, you know, if our part-time officers, who I do value, I care for each one of them, and I know they identify themselves by the important work they do, but none of those folks can help us out because they can't jump in and work those kind of hours. If they, as soon as they did, I'd, I'd burn up, I'd burn up four of them in, in two months.
Right.
You know, it's, that's not how they really want to work. If they wanted to still be full-time, they'd be full-time.
Okay, well, I mean, I co-mingle two issues, so I got that on the part-timers, but what you're saying is what was presented was a temporary position, but you're saying it wouldn't really be temporary?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
So, um, let me add a, a piece to that as well. I, I think the, the notion around the temporary is that if everything, everything goes the way that it, it looks on paper, essentially, an individual, you're increasing your headcount by one, the person retires, and then you're back down to the, the headcount you're at. I think what you're highlighting here, David, is, is really the risk. You know, the risk is if the individual doesn't retire, then you end up with another individual, and I think, you know, Chief Fisher is saying it wouldn't be fair to to, uh, to essentially say, well, no, you don't have a job. So I think from that standpoint, that's something that select board needs to kind of think.
I would just say, don't, don't call it temporary. We're talking about adding an officer.
Yeah.
Let's just square that up.
That may be an ad, right? It may be an ad, or it may not be an ad if this other person retires.
Yes, it is. And I think the other thing that, you know, I was throughout here, you know, because Chief and I talked about this, there is an aspect of this and, and, you know, this was an, an idea that I had come up with is that, you know, if we were to wait until the individual does retire, and then the chief were to go through a recruiting set kind of process, it, it's, you know, gonna be nine months to a year, right, before he addresses some of the full, some of the overtime.
I mean, it's reasonable to do, it's always reasonable to have a contingency, so I, I get that. I have one, one more question, maybe it's a Victor question.
And then we need to try to move on shortly thereafter.
When an officer is IOD, to me, that's a workers' comp issue. Does the workers' comp insurance kick in? In other words, is that salary being paid off a different pot of money?
We get a, we get a thousand dollars every other week of their salary.
So it's not much.
It's between a quarter and a third of their salary, depending on the person.
So it's not a full, like, disability?
No.
Like, private sector. Okay, thank you, I'm done.
Kate or Luke, do you have any quick questions or comments?
No, I, I, I don't have any questions. I, I'd just like to actually throw my name in to be the, the select board rep on this. That was a police liaison for years, but you know, I just, I, I, I think with, you know, kind of what's been going on with everything, maybe just good to have a different, you know, person in the mix on this stuff, so that's why. Unless, you know, people don't, most people don't want me there.
I, I, I think this is, I think this is, yeah, I, I completely support this.
And Luke. I, I completely support it as well. I, I also applaud you, John, for you know, moving forward on trying to have these problem-solving sessions with some of the police staff, because I think, while it's not always easy to do, I, I, I think there'll be a huge benefit, I, I think, in terms of having this be something that, that sort of representative group of the department are gonna tackle together. So I think that's a great move on your part. Kate, did you have any last comment?
Uh, no, I just, uh, wanted to, you know, be assured that whoever is the planning board member will have the time, because it looks like it's gonna be intensive during the, I take it it's gonna be during the day, not in the evening. So just want to be sure that we have coverage.
Two, two-hour things and I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll work around that.
Okay, great. Um, well, unless someone else wants to, you know, speak up to be that representative of the select board, I would say we move ahead and have Luke do that. Anybody else want to vie for the opportunity? Okay, well, that's great, Luke. Thank you for stepping up and volunteering. So.
I'm just gonna say, and yeah, I'll make sure I make the time. Yeah, it's, it's, even though it's during the day, you know, as long as we can, you know, plan relatively, you know, well in advance. It doesn't have to be, you know, months, but, you know, a week or two.
Yeah, you don't have, you're, 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 you're timeline here has the report back to the select board in two weeks, so. Yeah, that's to happen in the next couple of weeks.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll make it work.
All right, good.
No travel, I don't have any travel coming up, so.
Okay, so, so Chief, I, I really appreciate the presentation. I, I think it's helpful and we'll look forward to hearing back from you in a couple of weeks.
Yes, thank you, thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, all right. So I want to Um, so I want to move on to the, um, presentation from the Council on Aging. Um, I, Joan, I, I don't see everybody here right at the moment, but I bet you're there. Uh, Joan Ingersoll, the, uh, Director of the Council on Aging. Yes. Hi, Joan. Oh, there you are. Great. And I see you, you may have a couple of other, um, board members with you.
I have a bunch of board members that have been here the whole time, so I greatly appreciate the support.
Would you like to mention those members too?
Yes. Um, we have Ann Quennen, who's the Board Chair. We have Ann James, who's the Vice Chair. We have Verna Gilbert, who is the Secretary. We have Abba Singh Hall, who was the, um, immediate past Chair. And John Valentine was on. I don't know if he is anymore, but I definitely see the four I just mentioned.
Excellent. Good. Well, welcome to you all. Uh, so Joan, are you set to share, um, some
Yep. I think so.
Okay, great.
Let's see.
I can do. And for the select board members, you know, this is in our packet. The, the presentation around, uh, some changes in the, um, senior tax deferral program that being recommended to us by the COA.
Hold a sec. Hold on a minute. Uh, maybe I have to hit share screen first. Yeah. What I do? Uh, oh, okay. Wait, wait. Okay. Did that work?
Yes. Well done.
Oh, I'm so excited. Okay. Um, all right. So this came up because I was approached by a resident, um, a senior who has asked me repeatedly to kind of look into this and figure out what we can do differently. And I did start to look into it and thought that we could make some changes that hopefully, um, are not, you know, difficult to make and won't put the town at risk financially. And that would make this a more senior-friendly proposal because right now we don't have any seniors that participate. So just for people that, you know, just to quickly review for people that don't have this in the packet. Um, and you know, I'm not an attorney. I got most of my information just by doing research in a pretty quick manner. But, um, I did have some documents from the state that I used as sources. So, you know, there is a senior tax deferral program that any, um, municipality can participate in. And there's a whole bunch of, um, domicile requirements and things like that. But what I'm really um, looking at is what we can do to tinker with the things that I think are levers that would enable people to participate. So basically, um, a senior can defer up to 50% of the value of their property in taxes. And then when the property is sold or the taxpayer dies, um, the town would get the money. And the, the program is really targeted for seniors who are low income. There's a, um, an income cap and it's really for people in financial need. And you know, in doing the research and working with people with fuel assistance and, um, food support, um, we know of at least 10 households that would qualify and could be interested in this. And I'm sure there are more that we don't know about because Carlisle tends to be, um, people don't tend to want to come forward and ask for help has been what I've seen in my almost two years. So right now, the, the state statute says you're, you're, you can earn up to $20,000. But that's a ridiculously low number. So most other towns have exceeded that and you can exceed that um, by a vote of the legislative body up to 62,000. If you want to go above that, then the state legislature, I believe, would have to actually vote to allow you to do that. But you can go up to 62,000. The interest in the law, in the state law is 8%, which is what Carlisle has it at right now. But you can go down to zero if you want. And again, that's just by vote of the legislative body. And then, uh, okay, so this is our current program as far as I could tell by reading what was on the assessor's website. Even though I believe the state law says you have to be 65, I think our program technically says it's open to rate residents 60 and over. Um, the domicile requirements are the same as the statute. The income limit we've set is 40,000 and, uh, 8% interest. And like I said, nobody participates. So it's not really doing anything to, to help seniors. So then I did a, um, quick summary of towns that had their information posted online to look at towns, you know, nearby and what are they doing? And, you know, what are they, um, charging an interest and what are their, and are their caps? Whoops, sorry. Um, so you can see from that, that the average is about 3.3%. And the household income limit is about 60,000, between 59 and 63. And almost nobody had an asset limit or a home limit in the, built into the program. So then, you know, based on looking at that, and I should mention too, that, um, the board, you know, I did discuss this with the board. The board was supportive of going through this and trying to, in an advocacy role, come up with something that would better, be better for seniors. So basically, the age is 65, I believe it has to be 65. I thought that the income limit going up to the circuit breaker of 62 seemed reasonable. And an interest rate of 3% seem reasonable. And based on, you know, I don't know how conservative homeowners are in terms of wanting to defer taxes and then have their, their heirs or, you know, their estate have to pay it back. So I don't know what people's appetite would be. But I don't think if everybody that qualified did it, you know, then maybe there would be 10 people. I don't think there will be 10 households. There could be eight. I looked at the eight households. I know who they are and where they live. And the taxes would be about $86,000 a year that would be deferred. So that would be what I recommend that we do, or the COA recommends as a sort of senior-friendly way to, you know, make an impact on some people in financial need. And then these are my reasons, you know, more in line with nearby towns, you know, makes it likely that somebody will participate. So it has a positive impact on housing affordability. And even if nobody participates, the fact that we do it, I think is a, is a gesture of goodwill. Because we're saying we're, we care and we're trying to help seniors who may be at risk of losing their housing. So that's it.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I always have questions, but I let others go first this time.
Thank you, David.
Uh, I, I'll make a comment. I think this is long overdue. We've been talking about it on and off. I know Carrie Kissinger brought it up on several occasions. And I think all of these look like, um, very, um, well-considered proposals.
When I was reading through the materials and, and maybe I just missed any of your discussions. So currently there are no people participating. Did, did I read that there have only ever been four people who participated?
I didn't put that down. I had asked, uh, Mary Ann before she left and she said that she could only remember one or two in the last five years. But I don't have a history, a historical history on how many have ever participated. But I don't believe anybody has recently.
I think it's
Um, yeah, this is, well, yeah, no, I, I fully support this. I, I thought we did actually change this a couple of years ago, but we didn't. But, uh,
I thought we did two years ago, three years ago.
Yeah.
If you did, it wasn't on the assessor's website. And so I would imagine it, it's not what we're telling people publicly. So I, any, no documents that I ever got from Melissa, um, said anything other than what I've just reported.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, I just, yeah, that's, I, I think we should go back and just confirm because I want to, for some reason, 65,000 sticks in my head. You know, I thought it was even higher than the 62.
There's a bunch of different tax, tax things though, right? So this is just the deferral. There's all kinds of other things that go on with exemptions and, you know, there's a lot of different programs.
Yeah. Yeah. No, maybe it was something else. Yeah. No, I just, yeah, I just think we should confirm.
Like the CPA exemption is different. The CPA exemption could be what you're thinking of. And that does have a higher limit and 25 people actually participate in that.
Yeah. Yeah. No, it wasn't the CPA thing, but, but anyway, I, I think we should just clarify. But again, 100% supportive of this either way.
I see that Abba has her hand up. Um, Abba, do you have a comment on this question at the moment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say we did bring it to the board about three years ago. And it was voted down at that time. Um, David, at that time, David was there. And we, we wanted to talk about the tax deferral. I think they talked with the finance, uh, the town finance, uh, council and they decided that that was not the right time.
I was on school committee three years ago.
No, no, not you, David. Sorry, not you, David. I'm talking about, I'm sorry.
Um,
Not all about you, Dave. It's all about me. It's all about me.
Uh, Joan, um, at a certain point, and I thought it was also a couple of years ago, there was some pending legislation at the state to, um, that was going to reimburse the towns um, for the lost, um, revenue if they did, um, this, uh, extra deferral thing. And, uh, and there was going to be, I thought that we wanted to try to connect with that dude. Uh, and of course, lost track of all that. So do you know anything about that?
No, but I could look into it. I mean, I didn't see anything about that when I was just doing my research, but I can certainly, you know.
Well, yeah, my, my recollection is that, um, you know, that legislation was that, um, instead of the town, you know, deferring the taxes, that the state would pick up that, um, portion. So the state would pay the, uh, municipality for the lost revenue. And then when the home was sold or, you know, the taxpayer died, that would get paid back to the state. Um, that's what the, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what the legislation was. And I don't know whether that got passed or not, but I do remember uh, Melissa Stamps talking about that.
I, I don't think it got passed. I don't think it did, but I can double check.
Yeah.
We don't lose money this way. We're just deferring it. I mean,
Exactly.
And we get
Yeah, but we do lose money the year that we defer it. So that's
But that's actually, that's my question. And is Victor still around or did he take off? Um, it'd be worth asking Kim because I think from my accounting view, and I'm not, I'm a GAAP accountant, not a, you know, municipal accountant, but you would still recognize the revenue and then you would have, uh, and then you would have an asset, which would be basically not payable. You know, it wouldn't, it would, it shouldn't change. It changes cash flow. But it shouldn't change your, your income statement. Because you recognize the tax and you recognize the interest income. And you have an op, and, and the, uh, you know, it's basically a note between the town and the, you know, the homeowner. And of course, you have to maybe risk adjust it because you don't have 100% certainty of collection. But I think we should get that. I, I mean, I totally support it and I think it's a great thing. But from the standpoint of balancing our books, we ought to get, we ought to understand that. Do we have, do we have tax counsel at all? Or do we just rely on the knowledge of Kim basically for this kind of stuff?
Well, we have an auditor, you know, outside auditor, but
Yeah. I mean, we don't have a time.
Well, I'm conscious of the time here and that we have the, uh, the next presentation. Um, so, uh,
I think we should do it, but we should get clarity on, on those.
Yeah. So we're the, the select board is the legislative authority in this, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, um, do we want to, um, have a motion tonight that we support the changes as presented with the, um, with the understanding that we will, we want to, how would you phrase it, David? We
I mean, I don't know that we need, I, I think we can just voice our support and
Yeah.
we should put it on the docket for a vote a month from now and get just, or two weeks from now and get, you know, get a couple of answers of clarity.
Okay.
There doesn't any doubt we're going to support it. So
It's not right. It's not ripe for a vote. We need more information. But I, I agree with David. I think in general, you probably have seen general support. We're on the board.
That's, I think that's definitely the sense of the board, correct? I mean, board members give just by show of hands, if you're supportive of this.
Yeah, supportive of it. And I would like it if Tim could just see if we voted in support of it before.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
I'm pretty sure we did.
I, I think we did. I think we did.
Okay.
It was three years ago and we did.
Yeah. All right. Well, I'll, I'll follow up with Tim on that and also get, um, you know, a question around the financial, get answers on the financial questions too. And we'll put it on the agenda then for a formal vote on the 25th, Joan. Okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alrighty. So, um, I'd like to, uh, recognize some members of the, the transfer station task force that, uh, the select board, uh, created and appointed, uh, back. I guess it was maybe in March or April of last year. Um, and so we have with this, uh, Christine Lear, who's the Chair of the Task Force. And Tom Balata, I see, who's also a very active member of that task force and, um, let's see, um, any other members of the committee, uh, the task force on here at the moment? Oh, John Lavery. Yes. Hi, John. Yeah. Always fool me because you don't put your face, um, up there, right? So
Basement again. So, uh, for not to show the background, but, uh, hi, I'm here and I will definitely chime in if I, uh, need to. Thank you.
Great. And I see Rob Perry's just joined us too. Wonderful. Um, so thank you all for being here. So I'm going to turn it over to Christine and I know you all have, um, something you want to, a, a presentation you want to make. So, uh, I don't know, Tom, if you're the one that needs to, uh, be able to share that or
Yes, I have that.
Okay. All right. Well, take it away, Mrs. Lear.
Okay. Uh, first of all, um, I'm stunned that we can be here at 9:06. You guys are really good. Um, and I just want to say that John Lavery is in the basement by choice. He hasn't been sent there. So I just wanted to, um, sort of start off by saying that the, the, the select board voted to create the transfer station task force last spring, as Barney mentioned. And we began our work in earnest in June. The effort included a lot of, uh, the group working hard, um, a lot of good volunteers. We gathered information and data from the town and the state. Um, and then we, we actually did not have a predetermined uh, idea about where we were going to go, which I think was a real blessing because that meant we were open to every possibility. Um, and, uh, as Tom will show you in the report, uh, we're really lucky to have a very well-run transfer station. So, um, Tom will, um, present our recommendations, but the board has, the, the select board has also received a full report that includes our recommendations, a timeline, our methodology, financial breakdowns, documents to support our recommendations and responses to specific questions that had come up from the select board to us during the process. But first we want to say thank you, and that is thank you to, um, Gary Davis, who is the DPW Superintendent and, uh, his amazing staff, always willing to help. The Town Assessor, Town Administrator, the Planning Board, Assistant to the Select Board, Board of Health, uh, and the Carlisle Building Commissioner, as well as folks from outside in the state, the, um, DPW recycling personnel from other towns, local and private haulers, Orpheus Recycling, um, and our own regional representative, representative from Massachusetts, Julia Green. Um, all these folks were contacted by, uh, one or several of us to, to gather this data and put together our recommendations. And last but not least, I, I really want to thank this incredible team. Um, most of us did not know each other and uh, I'm really, really proud of the work that they've done and I'm grateful to have been a part of this process. So I want to thank them by name, Barney Arnold, Thornton Ash, Tom Balata, John Lavery, who served as our Vice Chair, Karen Panico, Carrie Patel, Rob Perry, John Petrie and Mary Zoll. And with that, I will hand it off to, uh, Tom Balata.
Hello, everyone. Tom Balata, 77, Nathan Lane. Uh, the bulk of tonight's presentation is going to be on the way going forward, our recommendations to reduce solid waste in Carlisle. But I have a couple of introductory slides just to connect us to our October presentation. So there we go. Okay. So this is really a review of what we did in October. In October, we focused on the charge. There were four elements of the charge. The latter three, the compliance, the cost of operating and equity. We believe we're all actually in pretty good shape and we, we decided to focus on increasing, reducing solid waste through increased in recycling. And that's in fact what the presentation will be about. Just a couple of other things in terms of our, how we got to where we are. Um, we should really appreciate the transfer station in Carlisle and the folks who operated, Gary Davis and his team. Um, 95% of the households in Carlisle use the transfer station. That is extraordinary. You'd be hard pressed to find another single community in Massachusetts with a transfer station with that kind of attendance. Typically, it's 50/50 in most metro west towns. Um, Carlisle's solid waste generation is comparable to other metro west towns. Uh, and our recycling performance is at least as good, perhaps somewhat better. Um, the state's representation of Carlisle as a poorly performing community is completely misguided and based on flawed data. So that's how kind of where we got to where we are and why we focused on improving. So that's how kind of where we got to where we are and why we focused on improving recycling. So now I'll go into the core of our presentation and what we're going to go through is a number of slides. We will focus on our specific recommendations, a number of program areas, and also the details, the timeline, the cost, impact on fees, and some other considerations. And so now we're going to the details. I want to start with education and community engagement. There's no question, this is the most important thing we can do. The community is very supportive of environmental efforts and recycling in general. But folks need to know what, where, who, when, how to do it. To give an example, recently, in the last year or two, we've had textile recycling and food scrap recycling. A lot of residents are not aware of that. Textile recycling, I wasn't aware. I've, I've been throwing textiles in solid waste for years and stopped doing it in June when I randomly became aware of it. Folks need to know what they can do, how to do it, and where to do it. And if we can teach them that, we believe we can get a great increase in recycling percentage. And so there's a number of areas to do that. Obviously, the signage at the transfer station needs to be improved and consistent. People need very specific information about where to put recyclables. Our website has to be updated and we have to have a substantial and ongoing public outreach campaign. It's not going to be a matter of one article in the mosquito when we start, but there's got to be ongoing engagement in the community, reporting of results to keep people informed is what we're doing. And also we have to make sure we keep people informed of changes in recycling. There's been some recent misinformation that leads some to believe that recycling is not worthwhile, that the, that the, the product is going right into solid waste. Absolutely not true. Recycling is very worthwhile. Recycling is producing both environmental benefit and cost savings to the town. So it, you need to educate folks on that. There's a set of transfer station changes. I describe this as relatively modest. Basically, signage probably is the single most important thing we're going to do. There are some physical changes. I'll show you just a graphic in a minute. We're going to relocate the swap shed a little bit back and move the recyclable dumpsters a little bit back. The idea there is to get the recyclable area a little bit better organized and also improve traffic flow. There's a couple of other things already need to be done. The oil tank has not been in use for a couple of years and needs to be removed. And Gary's already actually in process trying to do that. And when we do that, it affords the opportunity to increase the area for food scraps, which we hope to expand greatly, and also to provide some bins for redeemables. And then finally, as a result of this effort, Gary identified that two of the sheds at the end of the compactors are in need of a substantial repair replacement. So that's all included here. If I go to the diagram, you can see the major part is the white area here, which is the slab, new slab under which, which would support the four recyclable dumpsters and the swap shed, which is about 20, 25 foot back from its current location. That's the, the most significant transfer station change. It's all done within the footprint of the transfer station. Then we're going to relocate the mixed paper back closer to the, where the current oil tank resides, so that folks have shorter walking distances for the most commonly used recyclables. And we're going to, if I feel the cleanup areas, a general cleanup of the transfer station, replacement of the two sheds and the two outer compactors. And we're going to experiment with a, some lined parking temporarily in between the compactors and recycling intended to provide some additional parking capacity. So it's not a very large set of changes there. There is some money involved and we'll talk about that in a little bit. There are some specific recycling reuse initiatives. The swap shed has a lot of issues with it right now. Basically, almost at the end of each week, Gary ends up emptying a lot of ads to solid waste. Problem is, a lot of stuff is put in there that should not be. And it's unclear as to whether folk can take it for commercial use and other, to resell or other things. So we want to set up a clear set of guidelines intended to optimize what folks bring in and what folks take out. So better identification of how, what to bring in there, how to present it so it'll be taken, and also encouraging folks to take it for any reason, because we don't want it in solid waste. So if they want to go and resell it, perfectly fine. There's some other specific recyclables. We talked about glass a little bit back in October. Carlisle's glass is recycled right now, is reused, but there's some better environmentally more friendly approaches, which we're going to explore. For redeemables, we really don't want folks fishing through the dumpsters. And so we're, we're talking about putting some bins near the food scraps where residents could deposit redeemables and residents could take them. One of the most important areas is food scraps. Thirty percent of the tonnage going into the incinerator is organic waste, most of which is food scraps. It, it, now it's not broken down by community, but if, if that were true of Carlisle, we're talking 540 tons per year in 2019 of, of organic waste. Currently, we're probably recycling about 20 tons through the recently, recent initiative with Black Earth composting. So we think there's a lot of opportunity for growth there. And then textiles, a few years ago, the school initiated this program with Bay State Textiles, where the school gets paid $100 per ton for textiles that are recycled. So another very good opportunity. And in 2021, actually 20 tons approximately of textiles were recyclable, generating a couple thousand dollars in revenue for the school and also savings and tipping fees for Carlisle. Construction and demolition debris is one of the more complicated areas of the transfer station operation. Many transfer stations do not accept CND. However, in Carlisle, most of what's going in there is residential use. Gary told me he felt about 75% of the CND is coming from residents disposing of large items, small construction projects, et cetera. Considering that we only cost about $139 per, per household per year for the transfer station and can handle all disposal needs, our fee, our feeling was that we shouldn't impose a fee on residents for use of CND with one exception. And the exception being that if someone is getting a permitted building project, that they should pay a 1% fee at the time they apply for the building permit to cover CND disposal if they choose to do it. They, they'd have an alternate of not doing that and signing an affidavit saying they're going to dispose of it elsewhere. So this is one of, this is probably one of the more controversial things we're doing because it does imply a fee change. We should be aware, we're not essentially collecting any fees on this right now. And in the first three quarters of 2021, we collected $450. To summarize and where we are on fees, no change to sticker fee, no new fees for non-commercial use, elimination of this current CND permit fee for non-permitted building projects, and implementation of the new fee system for permitted building projects, which should be done on a one-year trial basis. So we'll look at how this performs in one year. And if in one year, determine what revenue we're generating, how much cost and problems it causes, and potentially continue or not continue it. Most important is how we're going to, what our objectives are and how we're going to measure that. Historically, Carlisle has had a recycling percentage of around 31, 32, 33%. And our goal is to increase that to 36 to 40% over a two-year period. That would result in an approximate 10% reduction in solid waste of about 180 tons. I'll mention that our tonnage are relative to 2019, which is the last pre-pandemic year. 2020 saw a substantial increase in solid waste, 7% due to the pandemic. Preliminary 2021 numbers show a reduction of that, not fully, but a good part of it. And hopefully by 2022, 2023, that'll become a smaller factor. We're going to do that through a number of initiatives. One, through more community engagement, get an increase in traditional recyclables, mixed paper, cardboard, glass, et cetera. 90 tons target for new recyclable categories, things like food scraps, textiles, mattresses, and 20 tons of additional recycling for recyclables that have been around for a while but are not widely known. One of the most important is metals. Scrap metal generates the largest amount of revenue for town recycling, but a lot of folks don't have a clue as to what, where it goes and what can go there. And we want to correct that. We're going to provide monthly reports of tonnage consistent in contact with the annual DEP report. As I say, we're going to try and get that data monthly instead of annually. We need to be aware of a couple of factors that could affect results in most cases, which are pretty precisely measurable. One is that we are recommending that wood be moved from CND to solid waste, small wood, wood to less than four foot in size. We're doing that for environmental considerations, but it may result in an increase in our solid waste for that. So that's what we have to keep track of. The pandemic is not yet over. We did see a reduction in 2021. Hopefully that will be getting even better in 2022. There are two issues here. One is if the pandemic rages on again or there turn out to be long-term remote work impacts of the pandemic, which result in some permanent change in the solid waste numbers. And then, of course, we have potential for population growth. That's typically relatively small in Carlisle, 10, 20 houses a year, 10, 20 tons. On the flip side, we anticipate there will be some move to commercial private haulers. These are people who move, that take the trash out of town, not to the transfer station. Currently, Carlisle has Orpheus Recycling, which does that with about 100 clients. And they're, they're engaged now in a major marketing effort in Carlisle. And we do expect some household growth there for them. This is just a graphic of our recycling goal. Currently, the green area is 32.6%. And we hope to add to that 6.7% approximately to get up closer to 40%. This chart is, the detail here is not important. This is what we're going to be measuring. Along the left are specific recyclable categories, cardboard, mixed paper, et cetera. We're going to get monthly tonnage and report that on a monthly basis to the community. And then we're going to use that to compute recycling percentage. And these are the basic metrics we'll be calculating. There's a few of these we need to get on top of. We currently do not get, for example, tonnage on food scraps precisely. We've had some estimates. I think Rob did some measurements, but we need to actually get, get that from Black Earth so we can produce that accurately. And there's a few others we don't have measurements on. Most important, this thing needs sustenance. One cannot just initiate this effort and drop it. So we basically recommended formation of what has been termed the Transfer Station Action Committee, which would be created through a merger of the HRC and TSTF members. Christine has a listing of folks interested in participating already. And that would, they'd be charged with making this happen and sustaining it in the future. Basic timeline, obviously, the first step is select board approval. Formation of a transfer station committee if you choose to do so. And then once that happens, we would begin site changes. As I mentioned, Gary's already trying to remove the oil tank. He'd probably move around some of the dumpsters at the earliest opportunity, the ones which, which don't involve the slab, and anticipates doing the slab in the spring. Our goal would be basically to have the entire work done by late spring and quote reopen in June, at which time we'd have an outreach campaign. In terms of costs, there are two categories of cost. There are costs that are required by the TSTF plan, but there's also some existing costs which have to be spent in any case. In terms of the TSTF plan, we've got the concrete slab under the recycling, the new signage and swap shop relocation, which in total Gary estimates at around $15,000. His belief is that that all could and should come out of the sticker fund. Is an optional townwide mailer, which we could do as a marketing effort. Most likely, that would cost in the five to 10K range and something we'll have needed to decide if we want to spend. There's also two significant existing items. The oil tank has to be removed and its contents removed. And there is hazardous waste in there. So Gary, he's got to get an estimate from Clean Harvest as to what that will cost. At this time, he does not believe that any remediation is necessary. He don't believe, he doesn't believe there's any sort of spill. And additionally, during this effort, Gary identified that he needs to replace two of the contractor sheds, which are in very great need of repair. And Gary informed me that he would be covering those within his budget. So those are something we do not have to add budget for. There's one area which we basically deferred to the Transfer Station Action Committee, and that is a consideration of private haulers. There are three private haulers in town which take, which collect trash from residents, sticker residents, and bring it to the transfer station. As far as I can tell, we're one of very few communities that allow commercial use of their transfer station. Back in 2014, Dover, which is most like us demographically, stopped doing that. And when they did, all of a sudden, an estimated 30% reduction in residents using the station cut their solid waste in half. So we are likely seeing in Carlisle about 15% used by these haulers. Probably, one would guess that they would generate 20%, 20% of our total solid waste or 400 tons roughly. There are some larger issues, and that is compliance with DEP requirements. DEP has a requirement that in order for Carlisle to maintain its special status as basically a small municipal station, which doesn't need to inspect incoming loads and do all sorts of reporting, we cannot allow vehicles in with a capacity greater than five cubic yards. We need to make sure that we're not doing that. We may right now be on the edge of that one. Also, we are required to enforce state recycling requirements on these private haulers. So some of them do bring in cardboard, but a lot of them do single stream recycling, which we can't accept. And therefore, we are not necessarily in adherence with that. So we need to have a discussion with them and see what can be done to assure we're in compliance. There's some other philosophical considerations. A group, a lot of the members of the TSTF questioned whether or not the town tax base should be subsidizing the profit of commercial entities. And that's certainly, you know, and that's a fact, one of the reasons Dover stopped doing it. So we need to have that discussion. It is likely that the, there are higher, higher per household solid waste generated by, by those users. And the other issue is the reporting. Currently, these, these folks do not report to the town what they're doing, their tonnage, their clients. And so we really don't know if they all have stickers or not. So there's a bunch of issues surrounding that that need to be looked at and see what we're comfortable doing. We're basically asking the TSAC to engage these folks in a dialogue to see what we can do going forward. And two other small administrative recommendations. It's not clear that we're filing, all we're required to do with the DEP is every five years submit a one-page certification. And I don't, I cannot find evidence that we've done that within the last five years, speaking to the Board of Health and Town Administrator. So we need to do that. We need to appoint someone responsible to do that. Our recommendation would be the Town Administrator. And finally, Carlisle is misrepresented in state data in part because we incorrectly report the number of households. And so we're recommending that a specific technique be used to, to report households. And again, that the Town Administrator be directed to take that responsibility. The last two sizes in the presentation you saw before, so I won't spend a lot of time on them. This is the current transfer station expenses. This is exactly as you saw it back in October. Bottom line here is $139 for household per year for all of the services that we provide. And the final slide was the efficiency of recycling. This again is exactly as you saw it before, with one exception. Last time, we'd said that glass was not being recycled. We, we've come to learn that in fact it is being put to a useful purpose in the, in the landfill. So it isn't considered recycling by the state. So with that, basically, that's the end of this presentation and turn it to questions.
Ronnie, you're.
Thanks. Very thorough, Tom. Thank you. I wonder if you might just comment briefly on the, your, your conversations with Gary as this DPW superintendent and his, his, I know he participated in some of the meetings, but mostly was in discussion with individuals outside of the meetings, including you had a lot of conversations with him. So where he is on these proposed changes and also the building inspector, which maybe John Lavery wants to address separately. But anyway, Tom, if you'd comment on Gary's feelings.
Sure. I spoke with Gary yesterday and I've spoken many times. Gary is in support of the entire final report. He has one area of concern, which is the CNDP. And basically, he's willing to give that a one-year trial. He's uncertain as to what's going to come of that. And I think as are we, we really have to, it is a trial. We need to understand what happens there. But basically, that's his only expressed concern at this point. I think he's very supportive of the transfer station changes. Yesterday, he told me he thought the most important thing we're going to do is community education, engagement, and signage. And I think most of us involved feel that that is really where the game is going to be won or lost. And I haven't spoken to John Mativier. I think John has, John Lavery has.
I have, if there's a question, then I'm perfectly happy to answer it.
What, what is John Mativier's position on the changing of the CND process?
He did not comment on his forecast of how well it would work, but he is perfectly willing to instrument the changes that we proposed, meaning that he, he is willing to collect a fee at, at filing for a building permit.
Fee process.
Yeah. And he, he's, he's willing to do that and, and collect the money. I'm not quite sure where the money goes at that point. That's a, that's a. That's a, that's a, uh, not a finance committee, but a, uh, financial clerk issue. So he's fine with it. It's not that big an addition because he already is collecting fees. So, uh, the concern from Gary, as I understand it, is that, the CND dumpster actually might become more popular.
Yeah. Well, that's why the trial, I think, was put in place. And Gary is willing to give that a shot. Uh, so members of the select board, um, other, other questions, comments? I, looking at our time, I realize, um, we, uh, well,
I have a question.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take another five or 10 minutes on this. Um, so yeah, who was that that said they had a question?
Uh, Nathan.
Nathan. Oh, hi. Okay, sure.
Um, so on the, um, private haulers, um, I was just wondering, you know, if, if we assume, and you know, maybe, maybe we need to build in a check. And I agree, you know, we, we probably need to do something around that. But if we assume that all of the private haulers are hauling for people with a permit, how is it that we're substit-, you know, you, you're saying that, you know, we're putting money into their pockets. How, how does that happen? Is it because there isn't as much recycling? What, you know, how is it that our taxes are supporting them?
There, there were two factors there. Uh, there is the factor that if you look at the numbers, one would expect that there's approximately 20, 30% more trash per household coming from those households than the typical, uh, household which brings it themselves. And that's one factor. But the larger factor is that, for example, if you take, let's take Orifice Recycling versus a, a local private hauler. Orifice Recycling charges the customers about $10 a week. Uh, that's the market rate for collecting, $10, $11 a week and takes the trash out of town. So those 100 residents, um, don't represent any burden on the Carlisle transfer station. The local private haulers typically charge about the same and then get free disposal. So they're, so they're, they're disposing of their trash free. Now, yes, it's a perfectly valid argument that those residents are buying stickers and entitled to do it. Nonetheless, it's a commercial use and the commercial provider can choose to either pass that savings along to the customer or take it as a profit. So we are involved in it somewhat, you know? This is not black and white. It is gray.
Right. Well, one could also argue though, that if, if we don't discourage it and we encourage more recycling through those private haulers, we could actually have a better environmental impact than more people going to Orifice where we have no control over it at all.
If, if you could, one of the problems is that Orifice, of course, does single stream recycling. So, which is, which typically the commercial haulers do to take it out of town. Transfer stations usually don't do single stream recycling because it's not as good as sorted recycling. So single stream is usually associated with collection. And so it could be environmentally beneficial. It could also be environmentally detrimental. So again, it's not black and white. It's gray.
Okay. And I just have two more questions. Um, one is, it sounds like this will cost, uh, $15,000 more dollars. Um, do we know where that money would come from? Or would this be a warrant article or can we get going faster than that?
Well, again, Gary's feeling is it should come from the sticker fund. Now, with respect to the sticker fund, as of the end of fiscal, uh, last year, December 31, that fund was depleted back, we had a negative $2,700 balance. I just got that from Jenna Givens this morning. Um, of course, now it's collecting the fees for 2022. So it will very quickly, you know, get 50,000 in revenue as people purchase new stickers in January and February. Um, so the question is, the ongoing, uh, basis of that fund is that 50,000 a year enough to cover that? Um, unfortunately, in the last couple of years, there's, there's been some major withdrawals from that fund for hazardous waste cleanups, uh, not to do necessarily directly with the transfer station. So it's really hard to discern the ongoing cost of that. So it, it, it's very possible that the $50,000 will not be able to cover all these expenses as, as I look at it. And, you know, it'll certainly be a positive balance through June 30th. But then after June 30th, depending upon other expenses in there, it could be that that fund needs to be replenished. Now, ultimately, one can do, you know, if one added a $5 or $10 per sticker fee later, you know, it's pretty easy to come up with that kind of money.
Right. But, um, I, I thought that the sticker fund was only for hazardous waste.
No, it's recycling, recycling and hazard waste.
Oh, okay. All right. I guess I've been misinformed. Um, I guess the final thing is just more of a comment. Um, you know, I'm the liaison to Gary, to the DPW, and he and I have been speaking about this. And, you know, he is, he is supportive of this and, uh, so, and I am as well.
Right.
I also just want to say, and I said this last time, just an absolutely fantastic job with every one of you. I really, really appreciate what you did. This is just tremendous presentation.
Any other comments?
I have a couple, uh, a couple of comments. Dan Cook.
Oh, hang on one second, Dan. We're going to have the, um, select board folks, uh, comment first. And, um, I, we actually don't generally take, um, comments from, uh, those, you know, watching, but let me see where we are in the time. But first, yeah, let me, let me hear, let's hear from Luke first.
Yeah. So I, no, I, I just wanted to, the, the CND stuff, right? I mean, that's kind of the bee in everybody's bonnet, right? Um, you know, I just, I, I mean, I, I'm kind of supportive of even raising that 1% even higher. You know, just to kind of discourage, um, contractors from, from using it, right? I mean, I fully support the, the resident piece, right? Um, you know, for residents doing a small project, right? They should have a way to get rid of it. Um, the only thing, the only other thing is, you know, it's, it's this enforcement piece, right? Where Gary's guys are kind of stuck in this weird situation where they have to, um, you know, look for somebody that's got a card to be presented at the transfer station. And, you know, and that card's got to line up with a permit. And how does, you know, the person at the transfer station match the permit with the address? You know what I mean? I, it's, it, 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 it just, it creates a, a difficult situation for the, for the folks at the transfer station. And I think we've all seen it where, you know, they go to address somebody without a sticker and they get yelled at, right? Um, so I'm, I'm not saying that this, you know, that, that should completely eliminate this idea. I'm just thinking it needs to be thought through a bit more. Um, you know, because, uh, the other piece too is the 1%, right? What if it's like 1% for bathroom, right? Say, uh, is, is a little different in terms of weight than say 1% for a roof, right? So we don't want somebody dumping in it. While I paid the 1%, I can dump my entire roof, right, in, in the CND dumpster. So I just, I, you know, I mean, I think there's a way to make it work. Um, you know, just some other things to kind of consider. That's all.
I, I think that, um, first of all, I think John Lavery determined that we would not take roofing materials.
No, that's good. You know, it's heavy, right? I mean, it's, it's,
Right. Well, for, it's the con- Yeah, it's the content of what it is, I believe. Um, but the other piece to it is, um, John Lavery had a very long conversation with both Gary and, um, John Mativier, uh, as did, uh, Tom Bellata. So, um, we really did seek the path of least resistance to get this process together. And I think that's part of the reason Gary, Gary's feeling like, you know, we, we know these guys. We know who it is. It's okay. But I think that on, on our end, the taxpayer, and we'd like to sort of look at it for a year and, and see how it's working. But we are very much keeping in mind the burden that we put on Gary's staff, who is already, they work the entire time they're there. These are the very hardworking people. And we also don't want to burden the building office. So we feel like, I think John Lavery was a beautiful, um, idea that he came up with. And so I, we have definitely kept those things in mind. But there's going to be a little bit of drag there for them because we really would like to look at these numbers.
Luke, I can just kind of, sorry, this is John Lavery. Sorry about that little picture. Luke, I, I totally agree with your, uh, insights. Um, and the, the risk to me is that contractors that are not currently taking advantage of the transfer station CND dumpster start to, because the fee is not high enough. I'm very aware of how much, uh, waste you generate from doing a bathroom remodel versus a garage rent, um, turning into a, a bedroom or a new house. We did cap, uh, in our proposal that no, no projects over $100,000 would be allowed to use a transfer station. And I also am very aware of what's going on now at the transfer station, which is nothing. So the guys at the transfer station, they have no, they have no policy. They have no recommendation. They have no collection. As Tom Bellata has pointed out several times, last year, we collected like $450 in fees. Uh, I don't know how many of you are aware, I'm an active contractor in Carlisle for many years. And if I had one 20 or 30 or $50,000 project, that would be costing me of 500 bucks, uh, which I would happily pay because I, I'm taking it there anyway, frankly, and I'm not paying anything. And, uh, I think that, um, we, we, we should, I, I feel obligated to pay. And I think that other contractors in town, and I think Gary's big point is that contractors that live in town like me, he's really caught on the fence there, um, versus contractors that are not domiciled in Carlisle, where he, he just doesn't know where the fairness fence is there. I, I think the fee may be too low, Luke. I think he might be spot on there. And that's only, we're only going to be able to tell, uh, if we try it on. We can't collect less because we're collecting nothing at this point.
Does it, does it make sense to start higher and then reduce it rather than start low and then increase it?
You guys tell me.
Isn't it, it, does the solid waste, does the CND goes into solid waste? It's just bulkier solid waste, right?
Not really. And, and the state's accounting, it treats CND as diverted. So it doesn't go into our solid waste number.
Where, but what does it cost us? Does it cost us 90?
It costs a lot of money. It costs $140 a ton. That is our most expensive disposal.
Right. So I mean, can't some smart guys like John, who are contractors, sort of come up with an estimate of types of projects and how much pounds of waste is generated? I mean, I agree that when people are using, yes.
I did.
And so what would like a bet?
It's 1%.
Oh, it is 1%. All right. So let's go with the 1% and see how it works.
So, and, and just as a refresher, um, remember the goal, that the primary charge for the task force is to reduce the amount of solid waste, or in my mind, reduce the amount of recyclable materials going into solid waste. Everything that goes into CND dumpster.
Yeah.
With, uh, it ends up in a landfill in Minnesota.
Right. So people want to, but if you're paying, I guess the counterargument then, John, is if somebody's paying the 1%, they're not going to sift through it. But, you know, so what? I guess right now they're not shifting through it.
I think that's where the education's going to come in, David. I think that we're going to really, we're going to make the education onsite or we're recommending the education really happen onsite with quick little visual cues, QR codes that can bring them to another page so they can truly understand what they're doing when they dump their, their items.
Thank you.
Um, I do see that, um, both Dan Cook and also, um, Debbie Bentley wanted to comment. And, uh, I, I feel like we should hear from both of you. I know you have background in, um, energy and environmental issues. So, um, but if you could make it very brief, please. Um, Dan, why don't you go first and then Debbie?
Uh, just, I'll start off excellent presentation, Tom, and great, great work by the committee. It's just fantastic. Um, uh, just a question on the incinerator in Anover. How long is that, the, what's the expected life of that? And are there better ways to dispose of trash in, uh, from Carlisle that are more environmentally sound?
I didn't know the answer to that question. Does anybody else know that?
No, but I will, I will say, Dan, that part of the reason that we really wanted to have, um, a committee behind the transfer station is because these things evolve and change all the time. And we can't expect Gary to be sitting down researching all of these changes. So we really feel like this, this committee that would support the, the transfer station could keep abreast of those things. And, you know, that's part of the reason we didn't go to single stream is because we don't know where that's going to be in two years.
Right.
So that's why we want that committee.
Good question.
I had actually understood that more than, uh, that the incinerator was going to continue to operate, but the landfill in Peabody where they were dumping the ash was closing. So there was, yeah, we do need information.
Uh, Debbie, just briefly, please. You're muted.
Muted. Sorry. When we were on the energy task force, uh, we calculated that the, um, the carbon emitted by our trash, our solid waste trash was equivalent to all our municipal buildings. Uh, that's 4% of the total, um, carbon emissions of Carlisle. Uh, for 10, more than 10 years, we've been a part of a green community. We've been reducing our, our emissions on municipal buildings. Uh, we have not been concentrating on our solid waste. Uh, it's a remarkable amount that we're, we, we put into the environment, let alone actually pollute our neighboring communities with our diesel trucks going to Anover. We need to have a much more serious discussion about this. Um, carbon emissions by solid waste is horrendous. It's something we don't need. We can recycle. That's it.
Thank you. So, um, select board members, shall we, uh, as we often do, um, take time to, um, absorb this set of recommendations, consider it, um, over the next couple of weeks? And then we can, um, deliberate at our next select board meeting?
I can just have one real quick question. The two committees that are being, that are recommended to be, um, combined are this one and what's the other one?
Household Recycling Committee. And we've already, um, Rob Perry is a member of that. And we've already met with them to say that this is the way we'd love to go. And Rob, you can speak to it, but we, they're pretty, pretty much in favor.
And are all the people on this committee willing to be on this combined committee?
I think I have at least five. I don't have the names off the top of my head, but, um, yes.
Okay. I, I'm fine to wait. I'm also fine just to say, let's, let's go forward.
Other members of the select board?
Um, I'm fine going forward. I have a couple of questions for, uh, it was a great presentation. I applaud the efforts and, um, I would just say to Ms. Bentley's comment, I, I agree with you, but I think this town incrementalist, incremental progress is important because as we see, like even in the US federal government, when people swing for the fences, they often miss. So I, I applaud that we're moving forward and we should be doing that. Um, so the question, Tom, on the commercial haulers, I mean, there's sort of an equity thing that sticks in our craw as we, you know, we believe in fairness. What, how many commercial haulers, it's like, how many households use commercial haulers, like 200 or 300, you said?
There were 200, 300 using the private haulers, the local haulers who go to the transfer station. And there's approximately 90 to 100 using Orifice Recycling, which takes it out of town.
All right. So it's 300 or 400 people, 300 or 400 households out of 1,300. It's a fair amount, right?
Out of 18, that's about, about 15%.
And, and your, your intuition or what you seem to be saying is they have less incentive for whatever reason to, uh, separate their recyclable, like the guys who use Carlisle. The guys who don't use Carlisle, okay. The guys who use Carlisle tend not to use the recycle bins. They just,
They use some. I mean, they do recycle. I've seen a lot of cardboard recycling. The, the issue is, for example, most of them, i- if they recycle, even the common recyclables, are they going to take their food scraps? Probably not, because,
Well, not the food scraps, but I mean, I've seen these guys. They, you're right. They put the cardboard in the bin and they put everything else in the other bin. And I rarely ever see the guys with the flatbeds, which by the way, they're not pickup trucks, right? They're larger than pickup trucks, but they're, they're not using the, the recycle bin. So, I mean, from an equity standpoint, I'd really like to see, you know, more effort on that to kind of make them do the right thing. Because I may, I guess it's the households. I, I, I take, um, Nathan's point. I mean, I don't think it really changes our economics as long as they're paying their sticker fee. But if they're not behaving as well as the rest of the population, we should be, you know, encouraging them in whatever way to do that.
David, that's why we wanted to put this in the hands of, again, of the, um, the committee supporting the transfer station, because this deserves a full conversation, a full exploration. We didn't want to just make a recommendation because some of us were just like, yeah, just get rid of them. But they're a small business, they're small businesses. We don't want to just be very casual about how we handle them. So we'd like this, this supporting committee to really work with private haulers.
Right. I know you can't do everything. So that's point one. Point two, I think, on the equity and fairness, uh, front is we have a little, because we're a rich town, there's a little ecosystem of people who is we have a little, because we're a rich town, there's a little ecosystem of people who aren't rich who sort of, you know, help in a way, kind of symbiotically. So Liz, the woman who picks through the cans to pick out the cans that, you know, she can go take somewhere to get some money. I like it if we could separate and somebody could go get them. But I worry that, you know, I mean, I think it doesn't bother me that somebody's making a very modest living over separating what we've thrown out and extracting some money. And by the same token, and I'm not sure I got your point, Tom. On the transfer station, do we care if people take this, I'm sorry, on the swap shed? Do we care if people take things for resale? I mean, why would we care? We just want to get out of.
No, we don't. We don't. Our proposal is that they be able to do whatever they want because we don't want a solid waste.
Okay, right. So on those two points, I mean, I would encourage if people have the initiative to go, come to a wealthier town and pick through our trash and make something out of it. I'm all for that. I'm just all for that. Thank you.
Listen, it is time for us to, to try to move on. I'm conscious that we've got several more important things to do tonight. Kate, did you have a last comment?
Yeah, well, as a user of one of those local private haulers, I have, I, I do separate all my stuff, but I also make trips to the to the transfer station because honestly, I don't trust that they actually take my.
They don't. I'm telling you, they don't.
And I've spent all the, so it's not, so it's not necessarily the users of those that are not doing their thing. It may be the people that are picking it up. So it's, that's.
I have never seen one of those guys put anything in the plastic glass or can bin.
And yet I separate it all out in my garage. So.
Right. You see, you're just reinforcing the point that, you know, this follow-up committee is going to take a closer look at this, really talk with the haulers, try to figure out what are, what are ways to improve that. So I heard Nathan say he would be ready to vote tonight. Other member, any, anybody ready to put a motion on the, well, let me have a straw, straw of hands. Do people want to wait? Put your hand up if you'd rather wait a couple of weeks. And then, oh gosh, and who's ready to vote tonight? I, I didn't mean to put my hand up. I was demonstrating. Oh.
I'll do the wait. I have no problem.
Okay.
I just want to, it's only, the only reason to wait, I would say, please, the only reason to wait is it's a complicated set of recommendations. We ought to codify it. Maybe Barney, since you're on the task force, you can work with the task force to actually create a resolution or a motion that encapsulates all the pieces.
Gosh, do we, okay.
Yeah, I would say, I'm not, I, I'm not in favor of waiting because I'm not in support. I'm in favor of waiting because I think just what David said.
We should, we should. Okay. So just to be, to understand what you're asking, that you want the task force to come back with a specific motion of what it is they would like the select board to approve, vote on? Okay.
I think the chair of the select board is in the perfect place to manage the motion.
Happy to do so with the great team of the existing task force. Okay, great. So we'll, we'll have this on our agenda for two weeks from now then. All right. Thank you very much, Christine and Tom and John and Rob and the rest of the committee.
Thank you guys.
Really good work.
Thanks, everyone. You guys are awesome. My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alrighty, so Tim, I I apologize for keeping you waiting, but I knew that you had to stay in the meeting anyway.
That's right. I had nowhere to go, so.
Yeah. So anyway, our, our next agenda item is about the COLA for the non-union employees and our, our recommendation. So again, that's in your packet. But Tim, do you want to put up some of the, that, that information that you shared in the packet?
If the board has it, I, I can, but.
Well, it's just, there's some people still on the call and.
Yeah, let me see if I can do that. The screen. Alright. Okay, I think, I think.
Excellent. Yep, there it is.
The board had, had asked me again to weigh in with the recommendation for the COLA for the non-union employees, as I did last year. Normally, the personnel committee would be making this recommendation to you, but they, once again, weren't able to meet to consider that. So I, in my memo to you, I included the various data points that the personnel board would consider normally in making that recommendation. And you'll see some of them on the screen. Would consider the town's history in providing COLA increases, some economic indicators such as the social security COLA, the consumer price index or the increase in that from year to year, the status of the town's collective bargaining agreements with our unions, also the employment agreements for positions like the police chief and the town administrator, fire chief and so forth. And lastly, we try to survey area communities and what they're offering in terms of a COLA or what they're building into their budget planning going forward. And what, what we see i- is that in the case of the collective bargaining agreements, the contracts, what other communities are doing that the recommendations or the, or the numbers are kind of clustered, clustered around 2%. This year, unlike many years in the past, the consumer price index was up 6.8% year to year. And social security COLA is 5.9% with kind of a historically high number for them. But I pointed out that the town's previous COLA history has exceeded 2% per year on average, going back 10 years, even, even 30 years. While the social security rate of increase, even factoring in this 6% increase for next year is under 2%. It's about 1.87%. So historically, the, the town COLA has exceeded, you know, the economic indicators that are out there. It's usually been more closely aligned with what the town's unions are receiving for increases, what some of the contractual employees are getting. And sort of what the marketplace has dictated in terms of what other towns are doing. So it's been important to the town, I think, to create that kind of equity. And it certainly, you know, the, the town has done a good job, I think, in bargaining prior years' contracts to keep them in the 2% range. And you know, for, for those reasons and others, I'm recommending that the board adopt a 2% COLA for fiscal '23 and to you know, vote that and make the finance committee obviously aware of that because that factors into their budget development process. So I think that the, as I said, that the economic indicators, you know, this is apparently a period of high inflation, you know, over the past several months and maybe going forward. But historically, I think that the town's recommendations have more closely tracked along with what we're doing with contracts in town and other, other factors that you know, consistently, we've been above the economic indicators. So I think there's no read, no reason to chase those numbers as they go higher when we've, we've exceeded them in years past. I don't know if the board has any questions about that, but you, you can see some of the indicators on the screen. And this, these are the numbers that normally a personnel board would use in making a recommendation to you, which, as you know, you can see from the past history, has remarkably been 2% for any number of years. So it hasn't varied a lot, but it, you know, I think it's, I think it's fair. And I think it's, you know, representative for the non-union folks. So are there any, any questions?
Did you, Tim, did you have a second piece of information that was comparing? Don't, don't I remember a second piece in our packet? I don't have that right.
Yeah, well, more than two pieces, probably more information than you wanted. I think there is another chart that I think that just.
It may not be needed. I, I wonder if anyone on the select board is prepared to make a motion to accept a recommendation of a 2% COLA for the non-contractual staff?
You know, I, I think we can take the recommendation. I don't, I don't know that we need to endorse it at the moment. We don't, the deadline for deciding that is towards the end of the fiscal year.
No, but.
It is, but it isn't because Tincom really needs to know this. And there are also some negotiations going on that.
Well, right. So precisely to that point.
Right. Number one.
Sense to them as to, you know, that this is the number we're looking at and they can put it in and they can tell us what the impact would be. But this is a huge part of our budget to be saying, yeah, now we're going to do it.
I, I'm not saying that we should do it now. I'm just saying that.
I would tell you.
I wouldn't wait till June.
Tincom has already imputed a number. This motion will not change the number they've imputed. I would just say that. But secondly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Secondly, I think the question is whether, I mean, I, you know, I think, yeah, there are negotiations ongoing. So if we feel the need to make a statement, then I would say, yes, we should vote it. And if we don't, then we shouldn't vote it because I worry if, you know, events will happen and then where will we be? That's all I can say. Don't want to say too much.
If I understand correctly, Tim, that I think you may have mentioned this, that we could as a select board return to the this question, were we to approve at 2% now, we could return to it and make a change in that? Is that correct?
Well, you, you, you could, you could vote a, whatever recommendation you, you like, if that.
Yeah.
David's right. The finance committee does have a number that they're, they have reserved, you know, enough resources to support what they, they believe the COLA, the range that of previous COLAs. And, and I don't think that, that won't change.
Yeah, no, I was more thinking, I was more thinking about, once we knew the outcome of the current negotiations, that if we made, gave a, you know, made a, took a vote now about what we wanted this to be, and then saw that, felt that it was not equitable in some way, that we could revisit the question later. And you're saying we could do that, should we choose to do so?
Well, I, I, I wouldn't wait too long over the winter because the finance committee would have to adjust
Yeah.
kind of on the fly with the, their budget recommendations. So.
Right, right.
Certainly, before the warrant gets printed, you'd want to have a
Right.
recommendation. Yeah. But it doesn't have to happen tonight. I mean, if that's the question, if the board can take it under advisement.
Luke, did you have any thoughts on this?
No, you know, I can, I can kind of see both sides. You know, and it's, it's one of those, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I think two is always where we seem to end up, right? But.
I, I just feel like, you know, there, there's so many more things we need to know in the budget to be able to do this. Why not wait? And we just pushed off doing the transfer station because we didn't have a motion. This is a major part of our budget. I just don't know why we'd do it today.
I think the only, the only other thing I would like to say is when we do get to our vote, I do not want to balance the budget on the backs of our, our non-contractual employees because they have very little power. And the other thing that they don't get, which all the contractual ones get, well, not the, all the contractual, but the ones, the unionized ones, they don't get a step every year. So if anything, they should get a slightly higher, higher COLA because that's the only increase in salary they're getting every other, what is it? Every one or two, every three years, in fact. For two years, they're only getting that step, that they're not getting a step increase, they're only getting the COLA. And they would then, so I, I just want to be sure that we are that if, and I'm not saying we're going to go with two, but if we were to go with two, that really should not necessarily signal much to the other, to the contractual employees because they're getting so much more.
I, I completely agree with you, Kate, 100%. I think, you know, it, it, and the reason why, looking at the budget is, you know, there, I, I do believe that we have historically always been very fair to the non-contract and, and making sure that there's equity there. There have been times in the last three or four years where we've gone, gone over what the recommendation was because we thought that was the right thing to do. And there has been times that we've gone under, I'm sorry, I think my dog really needs to go outside. There's the times we've gone under the recommendation. I think if, if we could just see how the bu, the budget is gelling more, then we can make a more informed decision on what we're doing.
I have no argument with that.
All right. So my sense of the board is that we, we take this under advisement and we appreciate the recommendation and that we will take it up again when we are closer to the finalization of the warrant book. All right, great. Tim, you're on next too with the town administrators.
I'll be right back. I just have to run to the door.
Okay.
All right. The first item in my report, you have a memo from Drew McMurre in your packet recommending to the board that they, that you appoint Phil Gibson of Monroe Hill Road to replace Lynette Kelleher on the REITCOM. And Mr. Gibson provided an email or some of his background qualifications for the position as well.
May I have a motion, please?
I move, we appoint Mr. Gibson of Monroe Hill to the REITCOM. Sounds like he's very well qualified.
Yeah, second.
Any discussion? All right. Well, let's take a roll call vote. Arnold I.
Oscar. Browns Rock and Dog, Modell I.
Reed I. Mike, you see my dog back there? He had major, minor surgery this morning. So he's, he hasn't moved the entire meeting.
Tim, what's next?
Okay, next, the three EV charging stations have been installed at CPS in the parking lot adjacent to the solar canopies. And now, before they can become operational, they have to be metered by Eversource and the town has to agree on setting the pricing for the charging stations. I guess I'd recommend that it, at a minimum, it ought to be the cost of the power to us, plus the fee that we have to pay to ChargePoint, the, the company that actually owns the, the chargers. I think that maybe a 10% fee. Our facilities manager, Steve Basstek, had agreed to manage the, the chargers as part of his duties. He, however, is out four to six weeks now with a medical issue. So I think it may make some sense to defer having Eversource connect those chargers to meters and, and to buy us some time on setting the pricing for the, the charging stations. Bob Zonk has generously offered to assist us with that. And I can't think of anyone that probably would know more about it than Bob. So I think we ought to take him up on his offer to help us with that. And try to get, get things back, back rolling and up to speed again for when Steve gets back in the office in the next few weeks. in the office in the next few weeks.
And also, um, Tim, I got a separate email from Jonathan DeCock, who was the person, you know, that worked on the front end of this whole solar project at the school, including the EV chargers. And he's also offered to work with Bob to help figure out the pricing. And, and so I would highly support the two of them um, doing that, uh, for the town with, you know, under your guidance.
Okay. No, that's good to know. I'll, I'll contact both of them if the board is agreeable. I don't think you need to vote necessarily. I'll work with them on that.
I just want to say at MIPC, there was a discussion of that, of municipal chargers. And one of the things they were recommending is have third-party owners and then you don't, the town doesn't actually get involved in any of it. They don't make any money, but then they don't lose any money either. And they just kind of make it, make it available. And I just think, and maybe going forward, we might want to adopt. Uh, and then what happens, I, um, and I think the way the MIPC wrote the, the thing was that then once the, the owner of the charger recoups its, its investment, then it starts sharing the, the revenue with the town. So next time, maybe that's how we want to structure it. You live and you learn.
Yeah. That's right.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Yep. No, next, just to provide an update to the board, uh, I've, I've put an RFQ out to executive recruitment firms to get some pricing on conducting a search process for the town, for both an interim town administrator and then for the search for a full-time town administrator. Again, knowing exactly the timing of how, how long we might need an interim, not knowing if the position is going to change in the reasonable future. We'll have those quotes back in the next week to 10 days. And my goal is to bring the preferred consultant to the board meeting on the 25th so that you can interview that firm. So that I, I don't see any obstacle to that. I think, you know, we'll have the, the prices back within, uh, on Friday, the 21st and whoever's the low bidder will be able to come to the, to the board meeting.
And my understanding, Tim, is that, um, they're really just three basic search firms that do this kind of work for municipalities and, and that's who you've reached out to.
Those are the three that I, I reached out to. They, they do virtually all of the searches, uh, in Massachusetts for these positions, municipal positions.
Oh, Tim, all, all municipal positions or do any of them specialize in town managers and town administrators?
Well, they, they all specialize in, in managers and administrators. Some of them, uh, do, uh, those searches for other municipal management positions.
It's all management.
They are, yeah, they all, yeah, they all, they all do that. They had, at least two of the three firms, I think, have worked for the town previously. So they, they have some familiarity with the Carlyle. Then an update on the search process for a new principal assessor. Uh, the assessors have been interviewing candidates in recent weeks. I think I had indicated to the board that they were very pleased with the the group of candidates. There were a number of qualified applicants, uh, that the board interviewed. They do have a preferred candidate that they're very high on, who is a principal assessor in an area community with, uh, a lot of good experience, a lot of experience in terms of technology, in particular, uh, experience with GIS, which I, which frankly, I think was lacking in, in the past here. So, uh, this candidate will be meeting with members of the, the town's finance team this week, the, the accountant, finance director and treasurer. And we expect to interview this person and recommend back to the assessors. And they in turn will be asking you to, the board, to make, uh, an appointment in the next several weeks. You are the, the appointing authority for this position. And, uh, you know, they're very excited that, you know, it was an unusually well-qualified group of candidates and they, they actually had, they had three or four candidates that they said they could all do the job, but we really, really like this person. So hopefully that will work out. And then the goal will be, once the principal assessor comes on board, then they'd be involved in the search for the administrative assistant, because as you know, the, the assistant left the assessor's office as well. So there are literally no employees in the assessors department. The members of the board and some senior volunteers are kind of holding things together, but they really, they really do need to staff up that department. And I think we'll be able to do that in the next several weeks. Okay. And, um, let's see, town council, uh, it says, is currently drafting, town council did draft a, a letter to the owners of Bo, the dog that the board had determined to be a dangerous dog back in October. And spelling out the reasons that, uh, we believe the board's order is not being complied with and, and what further action they can expect if they continue not to comply with the board's order. Animal Control Officer Gene Delano is, is, is right on top of this. And, you know, our thanks to Gene for following up on, uh, the board's order and pointing out areas that, uh, need to be addressed. So that letter has gone out. We'll see if, uh, there's any corrective action that takes place or if the board needs to address it again in the future. All right. We, we have a proposed draft agenda for the 25th. That's changed a little bit and we'll be meeting later in the week with Bernie and, and David to hash out the details of the meeting on the 25th. And we've got an upcoming meeting schedule, including a February 1st meeting with the planning board and master plan implementation, steering committee rather, and, um, some of the upcoming board meetings. One thing I, another thing I didn't, it's not on my report. I didn't want to mention a couple of potential opportunities in the area of regionalization. I, uh, I spoke with the, the acting town manager in Concord, Kerry Spidel, who would like to meet shortly to talk about possible areas of shared services that, uh, we might have interest in, in working with Concord. Maybe to mention, you know, assessing services. And also, you may know that Acton and Concord, uh, recently joined together in terms of regional dispatch, uh, within the past several months and, and their hope is to grow that program. And, uh, you know, they, they'd be very happy to talk to Carlyle about that as a possible regional opportunity. So I'll be meeting with, uh, the town manager in Concord to start those discussions. Also, within the past day or so, uh, I heard from the assistant town manager in Westford, Eric Heideman. They are applying for a, uh, regionalization and efficiency grant from the state for a, uh, a shared sustainability coordinator position. It's something that Westford's very interested in. Uh, they had originally approached the town of Tinsborough to share that position and Tinsborough decided against that. But he wanted to ask if Carlyle potentially would be interested in applying for that grant and sharing a sustainability coordinator who would, uh, you know, work closely with town departments and advancing sustainability, energy, uh, efficiency goals and so forth. And, uh, you know, working directly in our case with, you know, groups like the municipal facilities committee and the newly formed public safety facilities task force. Uh, if we reconstitute an energy task force, you know, this, the sustainability coordinator would work closely with, with that group. And, uh, would, would also do all of the reporting to the green communities program, which was a, a big thorn in the side of the previous committee because there was no one that wanted to take the responsibility for all the reporting that you had to do in green communities. So I think it's a position that, uh, we, we might have some interest in. We had a similar position, uh, we shared with the town of Concord a few years ago. But that, Concord actually, they hired that individual full-time and that's, that's when, you know, our part-time position went away. Uh, and that's when they, you know, the energy task force had the advantage of that position for a number of years. And when that position went away, there was no one to keep up with the state reporting and the, and the grants and, and so forth. And it, it, you know, became kind of a kind of an issue for volunteer community that needed, needed some staff time to be devoted to it. So I guess I'm asking if, if the board would support me continuing to work with Westford to see if there's an opportunity here to share such a position with them. If, if the grant to the state is successful and would fund that, uh, fund that position.
Got my vote.
And I will say that, um, you know, both Kate and I know that that's a part of what's in the master plan recommendations, some, some way of providing more, um, you know, professional staff support around that goal. Uh, I, I would also, I think, Tim, it would be, I, I think it'd be worthwhile to see if one of the members, uh, I mean, maybe it's Bob Zog, but somebody who, um, you know, was part of the energy task force and, but, and he's also been part of the master plan steering committee. It might make sense to have that conversation with him, you know, have him go with you. Or I don't know if you're going to do it via Zoom, but.
Yeah, no, I think I'm, I'm sure Bob would be interested.
Yeah.
That conversation as well.
And I'll just tell you, um, Westford is not the only community that's out there. Again, at MIPC today, Maynard said they are looking to, for somebody to share a sustainability position with. I think Sudbury said they were interested. So that would make more sense. Maynard and Sudbury makes more sense than Concord, I mean, Carlisle and Maynard.
Right.
And, and Carlisle and Westford makes more sense. But it's, it's out there. It's definitely out there now. So hopefully we can find a partner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah. And at the, um, it's interesting. You mentioned it too, Tim, about Concord and the dispatch services because that came up in the first meeting of the, uh, public safety facilities task force. So I think that's definitely worth pursuing too. And, and other shared services they might be considering. Any, any other comments on this before, uh, we move on? All right. Thank you, Tim.
Sure.
And so just note those dates, uh, that are listed there. And the, the one that's with the, uh, planning board is an additional meeting to our regular schedule. So that's the first Tuesday in February, um, when normally we would not have a meeting. So if you could please put that on your calendars. And, um, I'll, I'll just, uh, give a quick, um, bit of info about that, which is, um, I've had conversations with Madam, Madalyn Blake, the co-chair of the planning board. And, uh, we, she and I thought it would make a lot of sense for her to come to our January 25th select board meeting to share, um, both where they are and their thinking about staffing for the planning board and also just how she, what she'd like to do in terms of the way that meeting will run and, uh, what the sort of next steps are afterwards in, in terms of, uh, input from other boards and committees, et cetera. So I have said that I thought that was a great idea. So we'll, we'll be adding that to our January 25th agenda. We'll have some juggling to do, uh, David and Tim and Jen when we meet this week. We, we are over time, uh, but if there, we're just about to end, but Kate, do you want to just give very briefly an update on the ARPA committee, particularly with all the, the deadline for the, for the first phase of applications?
So the deadline for the first phase of applications was January 7th. In the meantime, um, the Treasury Department came out with this final rule, which was amazing, uh, because we weren't really expecting it until after the program ended. And the major takeaway from that, um, is that the final rule delivers broader flexibility and greater simplicity now, um, in the program. And, um, so I think, uh, that's going to put a little different complexion on, um, some of our, um, recommendations. And we, I also think it's going to save us a lot of money because the first thing, of course, we were looking for was a consultant to help us determine eligibility and, and to also help us with the reporting. And a lot of that's going away. So in a nutshell, what has happened is that the treasury has said they will give a standard allowance for revenue loss of $10 million to every city town and, you know, whether, even if that's, you know, greater than what, uh, the award is. So basically, all you have to say is I'm going to claim my standard deduction, so to speak, or, you know, the $10 million. And then you can, you can spend the money after that for anything that the town would normally do as its normal services. So that, that really kind of rocked us back on our heels.
So Kate, you're saying that the allocation that we keep, had been hearing about the 1.5 million, that's basically out the door and.
No, no, no. We're still getting 1.5 million. But you used, in, you used to have to justify how you want to spend that 1.5 million. And one of the things that you could say was, oh, we lost, um, certain amount of revenue. And so some of that 1.5 or it's actually, we're getting 1.2. Would be that. Well, now they've thrown that, um, that, uh, calculation out and they just said, well, we're just going to give everybody blanket, you know, like a standard deduction in, you know, and you, you don't have to itemize your losses. And so we give you up to 10 million. So we can, we can claim 1.2 million of lost revenue and then you can spend that money, as far as I understand, more or less how you want to. Um, I, we got about $2 million of, um, applications for our first round. Our first round, we still discussed, had a discussion last night. We decided that we're still not going to, you know, disperse or recommend dispersal of more than 575,000, whatever we have already on hand. We don't want to, you know, get ahead of our skis. Um, we also still have been considering keeping back apportions for things that are unanticipated, that could crop up, um, coming up. And so TBD, still a lot of discussion, but most of what we discussed yesterday was how this new, this final rule is going to impact us. And I, I would say we're still going to look for, uh, in fact, uh, MIPC has kind of has contracted with a, um, uh, company, his name, their name, it's a big, would you help me?
Powers and Sullivan?
Yes, Powers and Sullivan, uh, to do the, you know, the regions, more or less. They're going to work for $200 per hour. They'll, they're offering the services at 200 an hour. Um, and so we are inviting them to come and still talk to us about, you know, what services they'll deliver. But you know, we thought we were going to spend $4,000 or $5,000 at least, you know, on the accounting part. And I don't think we'll be spending anywhere near that anymore because of this, this simplified rules. But we still, we still have some webinars to go to, to make sure that we've understood this correctly. Um, I know Scott went to one yesterday. I have a couple that I've got, you know, I'm already signed up to go to, to make sure that we're clear on our things. It's, it's like nailing Jell-O to the wall, but.
We'll just, uh, I'll just add a fun fact. I spent several hours today, uh, sitting in on a hearing at the House, the Mass, MGL, um, Energy and Something, Something Committee. And Governor Baker is proposing to use $750 million of ARPA money to create a floating wind farm. How exactly he ties that to COVID is not clear at all. And it's 10 years of spend, which is not four years. And it's 10 years of spend, which is not four years. So, you know, if we can do it, we can do it, right?
Well, okay, I don't know.
Interesting.
I mean, I support it. I support it. It's a good idea, good use of the money, but it doesn't seem tethered to the narrow line we were trying to use. So I guess.
That's a lot of charging stations in a parking lot.
Well, floating wind is a big, very expensive.
Floating, yeah, yikes.
Offshore floating, no, when you go deep, you have to float. You can't just.
Okay, well. I'm sorry, that's, no, that's quite a turn of events. Thank you.
Yeah.
I want to go back for just a second on the Public Safety Facilities Task Force. I did want to give our encouragement to Nathan, who's volunteered to be the liaison from the Select Board to that task force. And unless someone else would dearly like to do that at this point, Nathan's agreed to be that liaison at least through the end of this fiscal year.
Good luck.
If you'd like to accept that role, please signify by saying aye.
I love it when I'm on mute. If you guys want, would like me to do that, I'd be happy to.
Excellent.
Go back on mute because we love it when you're on mute, too.
Ho, ho, ho. Yeah, we can let our hair down a little bit, right? It's just down to the last few stalwarts here on the call.
I wouldn't slow down Luke anyway.
Thank you all. Thank you, Nathan. And just very quickly, I want to, just the warrants that I saw, you know, we don't have minutes tonight, as I mentioned, but the warrants that I signed off on, I just, they're pretty straightforward. The town bills and then school bills. There was nothing exceptional in the one for 1222. But the one for January 4th, you'll see the town bills, we had teacher retirement in there, the MIA insurance. And then you'll see there the COVID cost for just that two-week period was $17,000 for the tests. So anyway, that is the end of my report on the warrants. And unless there's something we've overlooked or someone has a last item to raise, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So.
All right, roll call vote. Arnold, aye?
Askaloo, aye.
Brown, aye.
Mo, aye.
Reed, aye.
All right, everyone. Thank you all, Tim. Thank you, Jen. Thank you very much. And to the Select Board and those that are still on the call, thank you all. Good night.